Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education January 8th work session. I'd like to welcome our Teacher of the Year, Carrie Fugel, our Board members Brian Floyd, Rob Walcher, Keisha Sandage, our Superintendent Dr. John Kapicki, Vice Chair Sam Tredaway, Board Members Laura Lindsay, Pam Escobar, our Attorney Gil Middlebrooks, and our Board Clerk Kristy Spade. We have just come out of closed session, so Board Members, we will move to 4.01 on our agenda, and I will call for a motion to approve the January 8th, 2024 Personnel Recommendations. I have a... Okay. Okay, so a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Ms. Sandage. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those personnel recommendations have been approved. We will move to 5.01 where we will do our opening ceremony if you will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Board Members, we'll move to 6.01 to adopt our agenda. I need a motion to adopt the agenda for the January 8th work session as presented. I have a motion by Mr. Floyd, a second by Ms. Lindsay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Thank you. The agenda has been approved as presented. So we will move to 7.01, Board Chair Comments. I want to say Happy New Year and welcome to the first Board of Education session for 2024. There is much work to be done during the first quarter of this new year by our Board. I applaud each of you Board Members for your dedication and time commitment to this necessary, timely, and critical work needed for the future success of our school district. Casting a vision for the future takes time, determination, and a willingness to lead with the end in mind. As a Board, we have been deeply involved with the long-range realignment study and master plan to build for over 12 months now. We have attended two-by-two meetings with district leadership and our partner Cooperative Strategies. We've been to community focus group sessions, community meetings, and read and answered many emails, phone calls, and in-person community concerns. As Board Members, we each individually and collectively as a body need to keep in mind that our decisions will provide long-range realignment solutions and a master plan that will last for the next 10 years. These decisions will be based on data collections and facts concerning our county's projected population growth, our district's projected student growth from 35,000 to over 40,000 students by 2032, our district's projected facility needs for the next 10 years. The Cabarrus County Board of Education mission is to provide a world-class education to every student in our county. The Board's decisions will not only affect the students currently enrolled, but those who have yet to walk onto one of our campuses. We need to keep in mind that these decisions will affect the future success of Cabarrus County schools for many years to come. And Henry David Thoreau said, "It's not what you look at that matters, but what you see." So thank you, Board Members. We will move to 7.02 with Superintendent comments with Dr. John Kapicki.
Thank you, Mrs. Akkock. Good evening. I'd welcome, I'd like to welcome everyone back from the winter break and thank each of you for the great start that we've had to our second semester. Especially, I'd like to thank our teachers and administrators for getting our second semester up and off the ground so successfully. Again, I commend them because I truly believe that our teachers are the best that there is out there, and on a daily basis, they do wonderful things for our students and our school system, so I appreciate all the work that they're doing on a daily basis. I'd also like to thank our school board for the adjustment of their calendar. It has been reported to me and to our leadership team that the adjustment of the calendar has served our students well and our schools well, and the completion of our high school exams prior to the break has been nothing but a benefit for everyone involved. So we value the service of all our school board members, and as it is January School Board Appreciation Month, I want to be the first to say thank you very much. We appreciate all the work that you do, and it was evident as soon as we came back of some of those decisions you've made and how they're impacting our school in a positive way, so thank you for that. Turning to the calendar, hard to believe, but graduation will be right around the corner as we enter the halfway mark. We're excited to see this semester and see what and observe what the future holds in store for all of us. Our graduations will once again be held at West Cabarrus High School for our early colleges and at Cabarrus Arena for our traditional schools. Those graduation dates can be found by visiting our new and noteworthy section on our district homepage, and I ask all to do that. It's never too soon or too early to make plans for our graduation as upcoming. As you must know by now, we have a very strong storm system coming into the Cabarrus County area tomorrow, and as such, all Cabarrus County schools will be closed tomorrow, Tuesday, January 9th, due to the storm and the high winds and rains that are coming to the Cabarrus County area. The safety of our students and staff is always our top priority, and the State Department of Transportation has recommended that school buses not operate if wind gusts are more than 45 miles per hour. We do anticipate that sometime between 1:00 and 6:00 PM tomorrow, there's a stretch of time where those wind gusts could rise above the 45 mile per hour mark, and there is a chance of flooding in the forecast as well. So while I understand the inconvenience that's placed on families when school schedules are altered, we value the safety of our families, students, and staff, and we appreciate your understanding. We hope by making the announcement early this afternoon, we were able to allow more time for your families to adjust, and at this time, we look forward to seeing everyone back on Wednesday. Schools will also be closed on Monday, January 15th in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King, the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday, and our traditional calendar schools, Cabarrus Kannapolis Early College and Cabarrus Early College of Technology will also be out on Tuesday, January 16th. So please keep those days in mind, and I ask everyone to join all of us and take part in all of the Martin Luther King Jr. celebrations that will be taking place throughout Cabarrus County, and I look forward to engaging our public as I will attend some of those events next week. Realignment. Later in tonight's, later in tonight's meeting, Dr. Bowers will give everyone an update on our district realignment project. I'd like to remind everyone of some key upcoming dates as we near the conclusion of a nearly year-long project. Next Tuesday, January 16th, Cooperative Strategies will return to Cabarrus County and present their final data analysis, outline their recommended long-range facilities master plan, and make a recommendation to our Board on any necessary boundary alignments as shown in the scenarios A, B, and C, and C revised. Our Board is then scheduled to take action on Cooperative Strategies' boundary recommendation on February 12th. I'd like to personally thank the more than 3,000 community members who participated in our online survey, community focus groups, and the internal focus groups as well. Your feedback and suggestions have been heard and have been an important part of this process. As always, please continue to visit our realignment webpage at www engageswithccs.com for answers to many of your questions concerning our long-range facilities master plan and district realignment. Thank you, Mrs. Akkock.
Thank you, Dr. Kapicki. Board Members, we'll move to 7.03. Are there any attorney comments, Mr. Middlebrooks?
Nothing from me tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We will move to Reports and 8.01, our update on realignment study with Dr. Jonathan Bowers. Welcome, Dr. Bowers.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, excuse me, and Dr. Kapicki. Excuse me, I want to first begin by echoing Dr. Kapicki's sentiments and saying thank you for all that you do during School Board Appreciation Month. Your time, effort, and energy that you give certainly are a benefit to Cabarrus County schools, and we appreciate all that you do, and your presence, your attentiveness, your responsiveness. Know that this is a truly a special school system and a school district, and we're fortunate to have your leadership in place, so I just want to begin by saying that. And it's my honor to bring to you tonight just a bit of an update on the realignment process, where we stand, and some of the work that has transpired really since, as we looked at this, back to, back since the spring. As Dr. Kapicki referenced, Cooperative Strategies is prepared to visit with us next week, and they'll be making a boundary proposal or a boundary recommendation to the Board for their review. But before we begin that, I think it's important to revisit what has led us here, where we began in this process, what were some of the key milestones, and what were some of the key projects along the way as we've gone through this journey? So if I can get the remote to work tonight, because apparently I am technology challenged... Yeah, once again. Yeah, we're just doing it the old-fashioned way, all right? Sorry about that. Yeah. Really, so, presentation tonight is broken up in really just four different sections here, first of which is going to be a review of the major milestones that have led us to this point in which we are, then also want to share some of the findings that Cooperative Strategies has certainly discovered during their particular study and throughout the process, and then we'll touch on the scenarios. You've seen those, we've posted those boundary options, the maps, and made those available for our public. And then lastly, what level of community engagement we've had, the volume, and certainly the ways in which we've been able to connect with members of the public, and certainly receive feedback from our stakeholders as well. So this is merely just a outline of the timeline from more or less start to finish. So if we think back to where we began this journey back in March, that was the project kickoff, and so the first few months were really spent, from Cooperative's standpoint, collecting data on their end, being able to meet with stakeholders along the way, finding out more about Cabarrus County schools, being able to assess what are the current conditions in place. So extensive review with data framing exercises, collecting information on facilities, enrollment, projections, what are projected housing developments will be taking place within the future, future years, and also understanding what have been some of the trend analyses in place over time as well, looking back and say, what has been that trajectory in place, and what are we more than likely to experience as we look down the road 10 years ahead? That brought us back to September when Cooperative came, and they started to present to the Board in the months, actually in the fall, August, and September, some of their findings and where they were, and we saw the facilities master plan that Mr. Sturts presented from Cooperative, and then how that particular piece coincided with the realignment study. So what began to evolve was not only a realignment effort, but looking in terms of positioning ourselves for really a long-term planning effort such that Cabarrus County schools could really be positioned to absorb and to handle the growth, not only that is occurring, but will continue to occur over the next five to 10 years. And so throughout the fall, Cooperative came to be able to provide those updates as well. Then we got into the month of November, and that was an opportunity for us to hear back from our community. So we had a series of community engagement meetings that took place at four of our high schools throughout the district on November 28th and November 29th. We started at Concord High School on the 28th, moved to J.M. Robinson later that evening, came back on the 29th, went to Cox Mill High School, and then had another community engagement meeting at Hickory Ridge High School, and the turnout was phenomenal. I think our community and our stakeholders came, and they really appreciated the opportunity not only to hear from Cooperative, who was there to present, but also to be able to interact with some of the boundary option proposals, to have questions answered on-site, and really have a chance to see, okay, how does each scenario play out, and how does this impact families throughout our district? And alongside that, we launched the survey as well, and that survey was a chance for us to collect that feedback from our people, our folks out in the community, and to be able to say, what are your concerns? What do you see? What are some of the things that you certainly have, has caught your attention, and what has been your perception and your feedback here? So all of that information was collected, and Cooperative is in the process of synthesizing each of those comments such that they have a chance to review them individually such that each person's voice is noted and is captured, and that will be presented next week as well. And then we moved into the months of December and January where the survey closed, and now it starts to become this review process which sets us up for what will be the next steps along the way, and that is going to be the February 12th meeting ultimately where there will be an action item presented before the Board for consideration. So all these steps are leading up to where we expect to be come February the 12th. So the findings, three key themes that emerged, first of which was deferred maintenance. As I mentioned before, this is partial realignment, but it's also an effort to pair this alongside what is a long-term planning effort, and so it must be noted that we do have deferred maintenance, as many school systems do, but we don't want to necessarily let that be lost throughout this conversation and in the process. So the fact that we have nearly $500 million in deferred maintenance from all of our schools is something that was noted, so as we go through this, we want to make sure that we're certainly mindful of that, and we keep that at the forefront of our thoughts. Also, when they looked across the landscape, it was utilization. At the time that the study was initiated last year, we had 11 schools over 100% utilized, all right? And we had 10 schools that were less than 80% utilized, so that creates a little bit of an imbalance in place. So one of the efforts there was to say, hey, let's position ourselves such as a better distribution across the district, so that now when we pair this with a long-term facilities master plan, we're now really prepared to be able to make sure that we have adequate space, facilities, and programming in place for students across the district. And then lastly, the one thing that came out was also, you know, the reliance on our mobile units, I think we know that as well. So they identified that one out of every 10 available classrooms, okay, and that's just space, all right, if we think about this. Doesn't mean that one out of every 10 students is in a mobile unit, it's just classroom space, available space, was in a mobile unit, which signifies for time that has been the emergency valve, if you will, for additional capacity. So being able to position ourselves such that we have no longer reliance on that in the future. This here, I won't spend a great deal of time on this slide, but it is a bit of review to show exactly some of the data that feeds into this. Now, this is not a singular source that is going to be the sole reliable factor to drive any decision moving forward, it's yet one piece of an equation. But what it does is it gives us a sense of where our deferred maintenance is as it relates to the total replacement cost of a particular school, and it's to be noted that that replacement cost is based on the square footage of that school, not what it would take to replace an actual elementary, middle, or high that are currently being built today. So it takes the square footage of that school, and then it looks to say, hey, if we were to rebuild it back to the same specifications, what might that be? In some cases, we wouldn't do that, because at the time that the schools were constructed, that particular model is no longer the model to serve students today, doesn't have the programming space, it doesn't have the individual resource space that is needed, it's not necessarily tailored to programmatic needs that we have to identify. So those are considerations we have to look at. Now, if we look at some of the trends that emerged before using this facility condition index factor, it is noteworthy to say that R. Brown McAllister, which was identified as a replacement option several years ago, had a high facility conditions index, therefore there was the decision made to rebuild that site on available land that we had adjacent to the existing school site. When we started to look at, say, what are some other capital programming projects we have in place, the Opportunity School came up. Why? Significant amount of deferred maintenance associated with that. So again, we have a plan in place to be able to build a new site for the Opportunity School to house students such that they no longer have to be served in a building that quite honestly is just not updated for 21st century needs and 21st century learning. So this has been used in terms of what we're going to be, those prioritized items moving forward, and if we continue to bring this as a variable into the equation, you'll start to see other schools that emerge as possible considerations for, hey, what next? What must be considered? And the two that start to emerge there would be Benton Heights, or, excuse me, Beverly Hills Elementary School and Coltrane Webb Elementary School. So those particular schools right there are the next to say, okay, we're seeing this now move into a direction to where obviously we're going to want to give some thought and consideration as to about what next steps will be moving forward. So when we speak about the growth, again, this is something that we know is happening. Again, we've experienced it, we see it daily, and certainly it is a benefit to us, but it also presents many challenges along the way as well. If we look from the period from 2010 to 2020, you see there that population in Cabarrus County alone grew by about 27%, went from about 178,000 residents to just over 225,000 residents, and that was as of the 2020 survey. Well, now, if we just go based on what are some preliminary estimates this past year, some of the projection models said that we finished this last year, the 2023 year, with 240 residents in Cabarrus County. So yet again, you think about that, nearly 15,000 have moved in just within the last three years. So again, it gives you a sense of what is that recurring trend that we're seeing across the board, and those residents bring children, they bring families, they bring students with them. So alongside that, we've seen our schools grow as well, and again, that's welcome because people are an attractive destination, we're an attractive place to be, and we have a lot to offer along comes with that, the opportunity to be able to say, hey, how can we expand to continue to provide that same level of service? And so from the previous 10 years, if you go from 2023 back to 2013, the school system grew at a rate of 17% over that timeframe. We're projecting that same 17% growth of the next 10 years. As Dr. Kapicki explained, by the year 2032, 2033, we will be north of 40,000 students in this school district. So again, it's a ripe opportunity to be able to position ourselves for what will be a planning effort to welcome those newcomers to our district. And then lastly, the thing that we know is true, the residential development, the residential growth, we have over 25,000 developments in some phase of development right now across the district. That's either active, that's either in review, that's either currently approved, or that is currently proposed. So any one of those four phases, 25,000-plus units out there, and if you were just even to say, hey, they would even produce just, you know, a .3 child per household unit, that gives you a sense of exactly what we could expect to see from future student enrollment. So again, as I mentioned, the future development, the map there in the upper corner gives you an idea of where these developments are taking place. Again, I know it's difficult to see, and it's not really a great image, but if you just think those little red specks out there, those indicate the actives, and when we say the active, that means there is vertical construction taking place right now, things are going up in the air, so it's only a matter of time before there are people in those dwellings. When you look at those that are going to be in the orange, the orange means it's in review, well, that's the next step before it becomes active, so it's only really a matter of time before those begin seeing some construction take place as well. Then you move to those that are in the yellow, the yellow indicate those that have been approved, but they're just awaiting further action, maybe some follow-up from the actual builder or for some others permitting to take place or something along those lines, but the actual, the actual project itself has been approved, and those in purple, those are the proposed, and that's just waiting and looming. And so alongside that, when sewer and capacity come available in the summer, we know that that's going to drive another significant wave of this particular construction boom that'll take place. So again, as we pointed out, 40,000 students by the start of the next decade, one of the things we know for certain, we cannot realign, or we cannot rely on mobiles as a means out of this. So that is one thing that we just do not have the luxury to do. There's a chart that shows the capacity enrollment, I know you've seen this before, but again, it's just a reminder of where we are and where we're projected to go. As I mentioned, that 17% increase over the previous 10 years, that dark line, that's your trend line for enrollment, so that would really give you a sense of where we've been and where we are now. We are just at 35,200 and change is where we finished the first semester. So again, we expect even some more new enrollees after the second semester, because typically that's when folks will come to us as they finish up for other school systems. So again, there could be some in-and-out exchange as well, but all trends and all numbers of, everything indicates that we're going to see that number continue to rise throughout the year. As we look ahead, again, 10 years out, you see where we start to go, and what's important about this particular chart is it shows enrollment as it relates to our design capacity, which is our brick and mortar space we have in buildings, and then our mobile capacity, which is outlined in the red here. So when we see that dark trend line get north of that red outline, that means we're out of space, and you don't have to look too far down the road to say, oh goodness, at the turn of the next decade, we're really out of space if nothing were to be done. So it gives you an idea of where we are, and as we talk about a 10-year planning effort, this long-range planning effort with realignment and a facilities master plan alongside it positions ourselves to be able to be better equipped to address and to handle that. This here, these were the recommendations that came from Cooperative based off of their analysis. Now, when we talk about projects that we have, this does not include all the items that are on our capital improvement plan. Our capital improvement plan would have some locally, local projects that we've identified that obviously need replacement or need consideration or need to be factored in for where we go as a district moving forward. This just takes into account additional capacity. So the projections, the analysis, and everything that has been conducted thus far, Cooperative identified these projects that would add to our school portfolio, if you will, that would increase our ability to be able to serve students. So the first of which they identified from their perspective based off their findings was looking at an opportunity for a replacement option between Beverly Hills and Coltrane Webb, identifying that particular sector of the county for a new school rebuild, new school site. In addition to that, they've identified the need for three additional elementary schools, that's to be able to handle the additional elementary school capacity that would be coming within that next 10 years. Alongside that, they've looked at what would be the rebuild of replacement of Cabarrus, Central Cabarrus High School and Northwest Cabarrus High School, again, in no particular order there, but just identified those based off the existing factors. And then you'll see, they've even identified what will be the need for an additional high school beyond that in the next 10 years. So all told, when you look at their, again, these are rough estimates, so please, there are no absolute dollars associated with this, they're just for projection and planning purposes. When you look at total of the expansion capacity, that's nearly $600 million. But one thing that they did not, they did include, which we should appreciate, is the fact, hey, by the way, that deferred maintenance is still there. So being able to identify and address and tend to that along the way as well, and so you could see the total cost there that certainly we've associated with these projects, but again, this is a all-encompassing, across-the-board, everyone in the school system, every student, every family, every stakeholder has stake in this, and that's one of the things that this really allows for the school district and the school system to consider. So as we move into the conceptual scenarios, one of the things we'll touch on is the framework. And it's important to understand the criteria behind this, because again, these have been those drivers, if you will, those things to which came from feedback from, from the Board itself, from members of stakeholder groups, from some of the steering committees that we've had that said, hey, these are the reasons why realignment work should take place, and this should be the things that are behind the wheel, if you, so to speak, and certainly should be taken into consideration. So that became the key criteria. So when you look at these, utilization, feeder patterns, proximity, and diversity, when each scenario is developed, those are the criteria, and those are the lenses through which it is reviewed, and how does it either move us farther away from the district average or move us closer to the district average in certain cases? How does it increase distance or decrease distance to one travels? How does it better utilize a school or not utilize a school? Those are the decisions that are factored in, and it's looked at in totality, okay, as an all-encompassing approach. So that's sort of the approach that has been designed, and that's the way in which Cooperative will be able to share with you how they've applied this for each of the scenarios and what their findings have been. So we mentioned the development of the criteria. This timeline is just meant to show you how that factored in to the development of the scenarios themselves. So after collecting those key criteria, we then saw the release of several scenario options throughout the fall. And that's where scenarios A, scenarios B, and scenarios C were shared with the public and made available. And those were the ones that truly became, I guess, if you will, those main anchor points for what would be a model or an option to move forward with. So after having shared those and collected feedback and gotten data from each of those, Cooperative will then be able to be better prepared to make a recommendation based off of their findings and based off what they've seen from the public and also from their professional experience as well. So it brings us to the survey results. As we mentioned the survey earlier, Dr. Kapicki alluded to the fact we had over 3,200 members of our community participate in the survey. So that in itself is certainly noteworthy. When we look at the response summary, you can see there, we had the survey open from December the 20, or excuse me, November the 27th, and then the survey closed on December the 15th. So you see at the outset of the survey, we saw a lot of participation. We saw a lot of individuals take the time to be able to certainly weigh in on what their thoughts might be. A lot of that happened at the community engagement meetings themselves, and certainly a lot of that happened from some of our folks just from the comfort of their home, their own home, if you will. And you see another spike that happens on December the 11th. Well, that was the last week of the survey, and we sent out a mass communication as a reminder to say, hey, by the way, this is the last week of the survey, want to let you know that you have just your chance to make sure that you participate. And so again, we saw that uptick, and we expected that uptick as it was designed to do. So we just wanted to make sure we gave ample opportunities such that those who wanted to weigh in and participate certainly had a chance to do so. When you look at the conceptual scenarios by their actual respondents, individuals had a chance to be able to indicate whether or not they were very supportive, supportive, neutral, unsupportive, or very unsupportive of a particular scenario. And so the way this reads is that it certainly behooves us to be able to combine the supportives, both supportive and very supportive, and then maybe even also looking at the unsupportives. So when you apply that to what would be conceptual scenario A, you can see here that roughly 47, 48% of individuals were supportive in some capacity of scenario A. When you look at the unsupportive, you can see that 43% roughly of individuals were unsupportive. So that gives you a sense of where the community was or the respondents were in terms of this particular scenario. And if you remember, the scenario A was the one that gave the most attention to filling Arbrown McAllister at the elementary level. And then ultimately, it did some feeder pattern cleanup at the middle schools and the high school levels. And so ultimately, there were about 3,000 students that would be impacted under scenario A. Scenario B, this gives you a sense of where individuals were and certainly their thoughts and their reaction here. So you can see with scenario B, roughly 23, 24% of individuals were supportive of this particular scenario. And you can see that we had roughly 67, 68% of individuals who were unsupportive of this scenario. Once again, scenario B, this is the one that really looked at, impacted the greatest number of students, nearly 6,000 students across the district, and really focused heavily on utilization based off of what we've been able to determine. So it looked as if it really balanced a lot of the enrollment across schools. So that was one of the things that we did note when they proposed this particular scenario. But you can see where individuals, what their thoughts are on this one in terms of the survey itself. Scenario C, you can see here, this one, roughly 59% of individuals indicated they were supportive of scenario C. And then roughly 32, 33% of individuals indicated that they were unsupportive of scenario C. Scenario C impacts about 4,000, just shy of 4,000 students across the district, and most of those would be at the elementary and middle school levels. This graphic, apologies if it's difficult to read, but it does give you a sense of volume. Where did the response come from? Where were the greatest number of responses fielded from? And you can see there are fluctuations throughout, and we had some highs of 825, and then we had some that were very low as well. So again, from a distribution standpoint, really most of the heavy participation, if you will, looked to be centered in some of our larger schools. So that would make sense, given the fact that those are the ones that are probably experiencing some of the capacity challenges and some of the, certainly some of the enrollment challenges at this point as well. We mentioned the community engagement, and again, I believe this is certainly noteworthy as well. So just being able to say, okay, how have folks been connected? How do we know that individuals are seeing the information and are keeping abreast of the information we're sharing? Well, since the launch of the CCS or Engage with CCS website, 42,000 visitors at that time, since that time. So if you think since May alone, 42,000 clicks. Doesn't necessarily mean 42,000 individuals, but obviously people returning to this site as a source of information. So it certainly shows there's activity, there's volume, there's traffic. 188 questions asked on the page itself. And again, I will comment, our communications team, Mr. Fur, have done a phenomenal job of being able to provide answers and being able to follow up with individuals to have that information provided to them when those questions were certainly posed. So that again, it's a two-way exchange in that sense, just to be able to have the opportunity to have a forum where you can have a question posed and then an answer provided. 6,000-plus document downloads. Again, folks know where to go, they're finding the information, and certainly they're retrieving that information. And then we had 388 focus group applications, which I think generates a lot of interest within the district itself. Two community focus group meetings have been held, or excuse me, there were two community focus groups. We had over 55 representatives combined on those two community focus groups. And a series of five meetings happened between the months of October, and then last one ended last week, January the 4th. So over that time, a chance for them to have certainly participation. And then you can see, I mentioned previously, the four community engagement meetings, and then lastly, the 3,200-plus were survey respondents. So what's next? And what's next would be next week. And so next week, Cooperative will be here to present before the board this in much more in-depth fashion. And what they'll do is they'll do a little bit more of a sort of a detailed analysis of what I've provided here tonight, but they'll be able to share with you again, what has been their review process, take you back from the start, why were we here, what began this, and what led us to this, what evolved throughout, and then take you through the data framing, once again, the facilities master plan in summary analysis. They'll look at the criteria for the scenario frameworks again, review the boundary options, and then they're going to dive a little bit more into the data analysis, what's transpired, what they've collected, what their team has been able to disaggregate since the time the survey is entered, and also getting that feedback and those key themes that came from the survey comments, that came from the focus groups, that came from the community engagement meetings, anywhere there was a chance for our members of our community to be able to share their thoughts and their responses. And then lastly, they'll be positioned to provide a recommendation to Dr. Kapicki and the board moving forward. So I will pause there for any questions.
Is there discussion, board members? Ms. Escobar?
Thank you for this presentation and for all the detail. I don't know if this is a question for you, this might be for cooperative strategies for when they come next week. But the question I have is about the survey. We've been getting some people who've been emailing us and saying that they're concerned about that spike that last week. And so you explained it tonight, saying, you know, we sent out a communication, say, don't forget to fill out the survey. So people responded. But I guess the second part of that is, is that concerning in a data collecting mindset? And then also, are we, is there a way to make sure that we're only hearing from certain people once versus hearing from like the same person or the whole household or something like that? Just making sure that there's, we're getting at least one response from one family?
Yes, ma'am, no, great question. So they will be able to determine exactly which of those responses of those total 3,200 were multiple responses, were duplicate responses that came from perhaps the same IP address, things of that matter. Now again, they'll have to do that more or less by address validation. One of the things we had the benefit, both the advantage of in this is that when we had our community engagement meetings, we actually had Chromebooks set up so the individuals could participate right then and there, access that survey, and really weigh in and give their thoughts while they had a chance to have someone alongside them answer questions. We wanted to make that service available. But when that IP address is traced back to a school, obviously you can imagine that anything on that Chromebook device is going to have the same IP address associated with it. So it becomes a little more challenging to filter out those that might have duplicate responses there. But from other means, they have taken that into consideration, and that's something that they are prepared to speak to.
And then lastly, the, we should, we could see from the participation how certain communities were maybe more vocal than others. Is there a way that we're making sure that everyone is aware? Because people are busy, it's the holidays, that's what, that was the time period when we're doing the surveys. I was thinking about Thanksgiving or Christmas, I wasn't necessarily thinking about, oh, I need to fill out a survey. So I just want to make sure that even if people haven't had a chance to weigh in, that they are aware of what's happening.
Yes, ma'am, and I would say again, as always, encourage individuals to go with the Engage with CCS website as well. I think, again, our parent square notifications that we've been able to push out, sort of our school-level communications we've been able to push out, and continually rely on that. So even though the survey has closed, there's still opportunity for folks to be able to exchange information through the website. The website has not shut down, and we still rely on that, and I'm sure we're still fielding questions daily on that one. Yes, ma'am.
Sandage?
So I'll admit, I was a little bit reserved when we first began this process. I think my vote was no on cooperative strategies. But I'll have to admit that the process has been, you know, better than I would have expected up until we got to the community meetings. I didn't appreciate how those were handled. So I just want to be honest there, I've got a few questions. So can you remind us who developed the framework or criteria? Where did that come from so that people are aware?
That came from feedback from the board. That came from feedback from the focus groups. That came from feedback from the internal redistricting committee.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The next question I have, for just for clarity, can you remind us what deferred maintenance is and how we get it?
Yes, ma'am, great question. Deferred maintenance is really nothing more than what percent of a school's replacement value is tied up into maintenance-related cost within that building? So when we say anything that is a maintenance-related cost or issue, roofing, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, carpentry, renovations of any extent, any sort of lifetime replacement cycles on certainly key systems that have to operate. So those total dollar figures are added up. And if you've got, I'm using an example here, a school that cost $100 million to replace, and we have $80 million in needs, that's a facility condition index of 80%.
And then how does a school get there? I just want people to understand.
That's a great question. Operating and maintaining schools is an expensive business. I think we know that, and just based on some of the figures we saw that were being proposed by Cooperative in terms of what would be a portfolio expansion. And over time, there are just limited resources throughout. And so again, as these needs arise, as these systems, these systems have life cycles. A roof is not an indefinite placement on a school. And so when that happens, you're only going to get so many years out of it, much as you would with a car, much as you would with a home, and the things to which we assign value to. And as we expand our number of schools, being able to keep up, if we just don't have what would be a percentage of that every single year coming back to us to address those, it becomes a very challenging endeavor. So they build up over time. And then the older your facilities get, the more costly they get to maintain as well. And so that's another thing to which you have to take into consideration. So I think it's like anything else, is that it's, it gets there because as we evolve, the needs become greater, and yet the resources to address those needs are still finite.
And this is just based off, my next question is just based off of my inability to be able to look at CCS Engage over the last few weeks. Have there been specific questions that you have seen? Just a lot of the same question, and if you can share with us what that has been?
I think our greatest question, again, I don't want to speak for Mr. Fur. I think he's better at monitoring that than I am. So I want to be cautious that I don't necessarily say something that's inaccurate. So I don't, I don't mean to put him on the spot, but.
But we'll put him on the spot, Mr. Fur.
I would say our most overwhelming questions have come from those larger schools that are the most impacted by this area. We've had proximity questions, utilization questions. I would say most of them were dealt in the framework, but the overwhelming majority of our questions have been from those larger communities who are impacted by the most growth, traffic, and those kind of things.
Okay, thank you. My second to last question, so I hear the reference, and this is not for you, I don't think, but if you want to stay up there, you can. So I'm trying to make this make sense, okay? So we're talking about over the next 10 years, correct? We shouldn't have to make changes. Do we foresee any potential changes that we are considering may have to happen within those 10 years? And what could those potential changes be? Like, I'm trying to make sure, now, I don't know that we can make sure, but we're not realigning a specific neighborhood prior to 10 years because I don't know if this is the case, but I've been here in 10 years a lot. So if I'm, I am, my kid goes to one of our schools. So I'm wanting to make sure that you guys are telling me within 10 years, we're not going to have to change somewhere. So we're not going to have to change within 10 years. And if that is the case, do we foresee some potential times or situations where we may have to make changes in, before 10 years?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So first thing I would say to everybody, there's no guarantees on anything. Growth goddess here, growth is going to continue to be the problem they have to address. What I can say is, based on the data and the evidence that we have continually looked at and researched and the scenarios that we've presented, and we broke them down, and cooperative strategies, we'll go over this a little bit next week. If we look at our framework, if we look at utilization, feeder patterns, proximity, and how it impacts the entire district across the board, based upon the decision that the board will make according to the recommendation that comes to you, and I don't know what that is, but if you look at the scenarios, there are clearly some scenarios that offer more advantages than others. We have, we have the capability to improve the school system on every category of that framework. And I think that the only thing that we'll have to do that I can say immediately in terms of what will we have to redistrict in the future? We will have to redistrict when we build new schools. So if a new school was put online, we will definitely have to redistrict those schools to bring students into those schools. No different than what we're doing with Arbrown McAllister right now. So as new schools are built, according to the master build plan, we will have to realign those students. But the intent all along was to give people some confidence in the realignment that when we put this framework together, that we can say to folks, you know, you're going to go to this school, you're going to this elementary school, this middle school, this high school, and be confident in 10 years. I do not see anything outside of the growth just getting so out of control that we can't foresee it that would cause us to have to do any other realignments in the district outside of those buildings that we're building to address the growth. That make sense?
I just want to make sure we're keeping an eye out for that.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely, absolutely.
My last question is in relation to the, an email that we received earlier today about the, oh, good gracious, the folks that didn't identify a school.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you, can you help us understand how that information was received?
Yes, ma'am, so on the survey results, we've actually captured that. So if you did not provide an address or you did not indicate a school, that did not remove you from the survey. We collected that information. So there were 35 individuals who indicated they had no affiliation with a school, to which we've collected those responses.
Okay, so only 35?
37.
37, okay, thank you.
Mr. Walter?
I appreciate the update, and I guess we're looking forward to next week where we actually have a recommendation because right now we have nothing. We, nothing officially has presented, we don't know if it's going to be A, we don't know if it'll be B, we don't know if it'll be C, although it certainly appears that there's an obvious selection that we're being. It'll be presented that there will be a, a school closing. Is that?
The scenarios, the scenarios that you have in front of you do, do include the closure of a school. That is correct.
Okay. So, and we've gotten, I guess, some responses from a group that's concerned about that. Have we evaluated those, their proposal to us, or alternate proposal? Does that get forwarded to cooperative strategies? How's, how does that work? How does that process work? Are they told to go to the website, or?
So what I would say to you is that our team, our leadership team, is looking at all that information and taking all that information that's been sent to us, all that data, all that evidence, and looking at it, and examining it, and then doing the research and the homework on it. But we're not, we're not going to comment on any of that until the cooperative strategy makes a recommendation to the board, and then we'll be prepared to further discussion then. It would be foolish for me to say anything now because we don't have a recommendation. And this information that we're sharing with you this evening is just to continue to gather the information, share it with the board, so we're updating the board so you have the best information at your hands to make a decision, so.
I understand today is enough data. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're responsive to our community. There are concerns, and we want to make sure that they, we at least give them the attention, give their proposal the attention that it deserves.
Everything that they have sent to us, we have gone over. Now, I will say this, I want to be clear on this. All that information we are going to go over, we will address all that information in the very near future. But reviewing the information and looking at the information is not, is not going to connotate agreement on everything that we agree on what they're saying. We're going to present our, our, we're going to present our evidence as to what we believe is best for the, this system as a whole. And I'm not negating anything that has been sent to us, because we are looking at everything. And we will answer every question that's presented, that has been presented to us, and we will be prepared to answer all those questions. Again, our leadership team has done an outstanding job in, in addressing those needs. That's Tim Lauder, Brian Cohen, Dr. Bowers, Francis Lane, and Phil Fur, and myself. We worked at everything, and we will not leave any stone unturned. So if information is presented to us, we will take that information under guidance and look at it, and compare it to what we're doing, and, and give the board the information that we have, answering all questions that are asked of us.
I just want to make sure that we're respectful for the work that they were, they have put into it to make a proposal to us that may be an option for somebody to consider.
Hundred percent.
And I think that's all until next week, really, other than, yeah, that's all I'm going to have, wait until we actually have something to, to, to make an analysis on, because again, it goes back to, if there's a closure, there's certain processes that we're supposed to follow.
We are, we are fully aware of those processes and the law.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Bowers, before you step down, I do want to make a comment to the board, if I may. I'd like to thank Brian Cohen, Tim Lauder, Dr. Bowers, Phil Fur, and Francis Lane for their work on this. They have done incredible due diligence on everything that's come in front of them over the last 12 months. This has been a very tedious, intense process, but I commend them on their work and their leadership. And I can tell you that it's astounding what they have done on a day-to-day basis. So we, I kid Dr. Bowers quite often, tell him that I've probably spent more time with him than any human being in the last year.
And I'm sorry for that, by the way.
They have, they have done a, they have done a phenomenal job, and I can assure you that we welcome and want your questions and your input, and that helps us to guide us to our decisions. We will answer every question that comes before us and ultimately make a decision. We do not take it for granted, and we do understand the immense decision that's going to be laid at the board's hands in February. So I thank you all for your leadership. I thank the board for their help as well.
Thank you. Okay. Board members, we'll move to eight point zero two with our construction update. And Mr. Brian Cohen, good evening, Mr. Cohen.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. So this is your, excuse me, construction update for the month of December. And here we go. So we'll, we'll start with our Brown McAllister. So interior finish work is continuing for that, all the areas of the building. The exterior turf that we've been installing is about 95% complete. The test and balance of all the mechanical system continues throughout as well. We have final paved all the entrances and parking lots, so everything's covered up now. We have no stone showing. The OOPA floor, the no-wax floor installation has begun. Landscaping continues around the building as weather allows us. The walking trail that we installed on the multipurpose field, it's been completed as well. Temporary boiler that we've been, we've been working off of and heating the building's been removed finally, and both permanent boilers have been brought online. And marker boards and Cortax strips are being installed throughout all the classroom, classroom wings and spaces that are receiving them. The elevator installation has been completed. That's a milestone, because we have to get state inspector down here several times to do the inspection on that elevator. Final connections to all the kitchen equipment is ongoing. We've also been in contact with the Health Alliance, because they have to do a preliminary inspection of all that equipment prior to coming in and signing off on the kitchen itself. The interior next year signage installation is going to begin over the next couple of weeks. We also still are slated to begin furniture installation the first week of May of this year. Media center casework has been installed, and circulation desk is being installed. The bleachers for the gym have been completed. Overhead projector screen in the gym has been completed. The playground subsurface drainage has been installed as well, and the serving lines also have been installed in the dining area. There's a picture of the kitchen equipment. Just a quick billing summary update. You can see we're a little over 85% complete on billing with the general contractor. You can also see there an update on our diversity spend. Obviously, we had a 10% goal, $4.1 million. We exceeded that by quite a bit. They hit a new target, or identified a new target of close to $8.5 million, and we're not going to fall short of hitting that on our diversity spend on this job. It gives you nice vantage of the existing our Brown McAllister, the new north entrance for parents, visitors, and staff to enter from. The south entrance where buses and S and P down at the lower end there is Sunnyside. Just overall schedule update, a little, right at 89% complete. So we're, we are easily on the home stretch here. And you can see our substantial completion is still holding for March 24th of this year. That's the EC outdoor area, where we have a little bit of hardscape, concrete area there in the back, and we have the synthetic turf for kids to be able to come out and enjoy the outside activities, even if the weather hasn't been the best. And that's right there beside the bus entrance. There's looking back at the two main entrances. The one on the left, obviously, is the bus, school nutrition entrance. The one on the right, the north entrance, is staff, visitors, and parents coming in and out of the site, and that's where traffic will queue for parent drop-off as well. You can see the existing our Brown McAllister and playfield there in the center. That's just the outdoor, what we're calling the classroom courtyard area, in between the two classroom wings. And the synthetic turf we've installed on either side of those, of that concrete walkway coming out of the center of the building there for kids to be able to go out and enjoy the outside on. There you see the, the new walking trail on the multipurpose field, large area of concrete, that's going to be the basketball court, and the two dirt areas beside of that, those will be the two playgrounds. One will be pre-K playground, and then the other will be a kindergarten through fifth And there's just one more overall of the entire campus itself. That's all I had on our Brown. Are there any questions?
Ms. Sand.
Yes, ma'am.
So we talked about this a little bit when I, when we went to the, the walkthrough.
Yes, ma'am.
But it woke me up last night, so I apologize, and I'm going to ask you again so I can remember what you said.
Okay.
So there is a drop over there next to the EC wing. And I know you said that there would be a gate there. I see the gate. And then I want to see, does that gate open somewhere?
So, yes. So you can kind of see in the upper part of that picture to the right, there is a gate. As you come out of the EC classrooms, there's an exit gate there. What you can't see to the left going towards the front of the school, there is another gate.
Okay.
For every exit that you enter into a fenced-in area, you have to provide an egress through that gate. So we have two doors that enter out onto the EC area, so we have two gates that exit out of the EC area.
So somebody would have, or a kid would have to go through two gates before they can get to that. I don't know if it's, it's like a drop over there on the, by where the, the truck put, brings the kitchen.
Where the deliveries in. Oh, yeah. So that's, that's, that's quite a way separated from this area.
Okay.
We, we would never want, intend to have children over in that area at all.
I remember the conversation, but I don't remember your response.
It is quite a bit of a drop. You are correct.
Yes. Okay. Thank you for making me feel a little better.
Yes, ma'am. I want you to sleep well at night.
Ms. Escobar.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I have not asked this question, but just now seeing the map with the two schools, what's happening with the old school?
The, the old school currently has been identified as a replacement school for Mary Frances Wall. Anybody else? All right. Moving on to Northwest Cabarrus High School. So real quickly, our construction, construction documents are about 80% complete. We did receive our 50% construction document budget provided by the construction manager at Risk Shell Co. The total cost on this site for development and construction is still holding at about $114 million. Again, that is just site development and construction costs. That does not include FFNE, technology, technology infrastructure, startup funds, all of the additional items that need to be a part of the budget. This does represent about $405 a square foot for development of the school. All right? Again, that number will go up as you add those other items into that. The architect will be submitting to NCDB, NCDPI, the construction documents in February for their final approval, as we're required to do that. We continue to work with Shell Co. and the architect on value engineering items throughout, throughout the building itself. We are going to receive one final pricing exercise from the construction manager at Risk at about 95% construction document phase. However, once we do get to that phase, we're going to push pause until we can, as far as going to any further mid-phases, until we can identify a more solidified funding schedule for this project. That's just the rendered model there, the main entrance on the right-hand side. That gives you a rendered image of the classroom wing, and that is the auto tech area there. You can see the overhead bay doors and the secure storage outdoor area for the auto tech program there as well. This is a vantage looking from the dining area out into the main commons space. Any questions on Northwest Cabarrus? Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Escobar.
Thank you. So when you say when we can't move forward until we have a funding model in place, what, who do we have to talk to about that?
That will be a collective conversation with the county leadership and the school system as part of capital funding.
Okay. And I know that you and Tim are, regularly meet with them.
We do. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Anything else? A quick update on Central Cabarrus High School tennis court. So we did get the fencing installed right before the holidays. The net post and center post anchors were supposed to have started their installation this week, but weather has delayed that. We also had anticipated the repair work on the existing courts, where it's going to begin here in the next couple of weeks. Again, this project is really going to be dictated by the weather here over these next few months. The schedule of the system itself is slated to be brought in the last week of this month is what we have finalized with them. So again, it's slowly moving, but it is moving. Any questions on Central Cabarrus? All right. Hold on. So this is Hickory Ridge High School and the track. So the track surfacing is complete. Weather permitting, they are supposed to start striping that track starting next week sometime. It will take them about two weeks to get it striped. So we are still on schedule to have this completed by the end of January in time for the winter sports season to start up. And yes, they elected to choose a red track. Any questions on Hickory Ridge? All right. We'll close out with the Cabarrus Health Science Institute. So the construction documents for the development of the Lot M site, as we're calling it, are about 95% complete. We have had a preliminary meeting with the City of Concord and the Planning Department to review the project and the details of it, making sure that they were on board with where we were putting everything. We will also be bidding out portions of the outfit for the mobile units this coming month, and hopefully be bringing that before this board for approval at the February meeting. That graphic there to your right is just the aerial imagery showing the location of where the mobile units will be set. There is a larger mobile unit that we're calling a multiplex, and then there is a smaller mobile unit that will serve an additional need on that campus. The building you see there is the Cabarrus College of Health Science, so it sits directly beside of that building, allowing easy access for the students in the last two to three years of that program that need to have classes in that building to transition back and forth between the two. And then that's just a quick, closer view of the site plan and the layout of the buildings. Kind of hard to see the ramps there in between the connectivity, but it'll kind of be a common area that the kids can go and have some outdoor space at as well. And that was all I had. Any questions?
So Brian, we lose some parking spaces there?
Yes, sir. So we have, in that lot, there are 88 total spaces still available to be utilized between staff and students, as well as the adjacent lot. There's 33 spaces directly attached to where ours is located, so that.
Can you go back to the next graphic, Shiloh?
Yes. So the, the main lot where our buildings will be developed and that we have the lease on, there's 88 spots in that site. The parking lot to the right in front of the Cabarrus College of Health Science, along the borders that directly attach to ours, there's an additional 33 spaces that students, some students will arrive and go straight into the Cabarrus College of Health Science building. They won't come into our building first. But we have use of all those spaces in both of those lots.
Okay. So we anticipate there are enough parking spaces.
There will be enough.
For students as, as the program grows?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Board members, we'll move to eight point zero three, and the Essar update with Mr. Philip Penn. Welcome, Mr. Penn.
Madam Chair, board members, superintendent, good to be with you again. As was promised at our December meeting, I wanted to give a quick update on where we are with our Essar spending as we start to wind down toward the end of the Essar grants. And Dr. Williams will come up in a few minutes and join me on sort of the go-forward plan for the, the remaining staff that are on one, one of the grants. Gentlemen. Oh, there we go. Excellent. All right. So just to remind the board and for those listening at home, there were three large Essar grants, Essar One, Essar Two, and ARP, American Rescue Plan, or Essar Three. ARP Essar Three is the only large grant that's still active at this point. All the other two have closed out. But, but I wanted to point out for the board, they're actually managing right now 16 smaller grants that have expiration dates that go through September 30th to 2024. So it's, it's not just the one big grant. There were some very, very specialized grants that came down as a result of that Essar COVID relief money that we've also been working with. And that, generally speaking, grant recipients have up to 120 days after the end of the grant to liquidate any funds that were committed to prior to the expiration date. And commitment would normally be in the form of a purchase order. So you could have a purchase order that you send to a vendor, the vendor ships the stuff, you get to pay it. So that can actually continue out past September 30th of 2024. But we're trying to make sure this grant is more or less wound up by June 30th of this year. That's our internal plan right now. And just as a reminder, generally speaking, you cannot supplant with federal funds. It's got to be something that's new or incremental to what you're already planning to do in order to use federal money, and that's the spirit in which we've been doing this as well. So the next slide gives you a sense of, of all the grants, and these are the 17 that I mentioned that have total estimated expenditures for this year of $10.4 million. And you can see that we're almost exactly halfway spent on that $10.4 with $5.2 million spent. We've got a small amount that's encumbered and a, and a bit that's remaining. And we're going to go into a little more detail on, on that big one that's remaining to talk through some of that. But I should point out that of the grants that are here, the one highland. Um, and that generally speaking, grant recipients have up to a hundred and twenty days after the end of the grant to liquidate any funds that were committed to prior to the expiration date. And the commitment would normally be in the form of a purchase order. So you could have a purchase order that you sent to a vendor, the vendor ships the stuff, you get to pay it. So that can actually continue out past September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, but we're trying to make sure this grant is more or less wound up by June thirtieth of this year. That's our internal plan right now. And just as a reminder, generally speaking, you cannot supplant with federal funds. It, it's got to be something that's new or incremental to what you're already planning to do in order to use federal money, a- and that's the spirit in which we've been doing this as well. So the next slide gives you a sense of, of all the grants, and these are the seventeen that I mentioned that have total estimated expenditures for this year of ten point four million. And you can see that we're almost exactly halfway spent on that ten point four with five point two million spent. We've got a small amount that's encumbered and, and a bit that's remaining, and we're going to go into a little more detail on, on that big one that's remaining to talk through some of that. Uh, but I should point out that of the grants that are here, the one highlighted in the yellow, that's the ESR Three ARP grant, that's the only one that's got staffing attached to it at this point. Everything else is pretty much stuff, right? Stuff versus staff. Uh, with, with an exception for a couple of tutoring dollars that are spread around some of the grants, but this is the, the one remaining grant, um, that is, has staff related to it. And we'll talk about when Dr. Williams comes up, what the plan is for that remaining staff. And if you're paying close attention, you'll see a negative number on the remainder. Uh, that is a, that is a clerical error that we will fix in an upcoming period. It, it just has to relate to a pension expense that was booked against the grant. We've got the ability to just move it off and close it out correctly, so we'll just transfer that to a, a different grant as the case may be. So, out of that three point five-ish million that's left on the ESR Three grant, our projected payroll out through the end of the school year is just under, uh, two point nine million, uh, two point eight four five. Uh, non-payroll items account for a little over four hundred thousand dollars. So we're projecting available funds within that grant of about two hundred and twenty-eight thousand or so. Uh, now we have identified expenditures that are in our local funds right now that we actually can move to that grant, uh, without violating the supplanting rules. A- and that'd also fit the criteria of the ESR grant. So we, we won't be violating the spirit, we won't be violating the letter of how ESR was granted to us. So there is a plan to spend down the entirety of that grant by the end of the school year, and actually take a little bit of pressure off the deficit that we're experiencing right now in our local funds, right? Um, and I wanted to point out, Dr. Williams, oh, there you are. So, uh, when we started the year, we had ninety-two folks that were on the, the ESR Three grant, and we've now worked that down through attrition, that people have moved on to different roles or left the organization, down to seventy-nine. So thirteen folks have left, uh, and are no longer being paid by that grant. And Dr. Williams, you and I have talked about sort of like what the plan is for the remaining seventy-nine, and just wanted to just share that with you.
Yeah, so our folks that, um, as we've had attrition, uh, we do have some positions that we backfilled. Uh, one of the things that we were very careful to note, if you go to frontline and look at those positions that were backfilled, for example, uh, ESL teacher. Uh, if that, if an ESL teacher resigned, that was not in ESR funding. We took an ESL teacher who was in ESR funding and we moved them to that permanent position. Then we reposted that ESL teacher position, but on that posting, we were very clear that that is a temporary ESR-funded position. We wanted to be very transparent about that, so that when someone took that position, they knew that there is a possible, that that funding source is going to end at the end of the school year. Um, and if we have a new position that develops based on increased student enrollment, that person certainly could be considered for it. But we were very, very clear with any backfills that went into ESR-funded positions, that those were temporary. It was important that we backfilled them, uh, because that money is there and needs to be spent, right? Like those are positions that are important, they do support our, our children. However, we wanted to be very transparent, that those folks would not have a funding source at the end of the year, and they are. Quite honestly, anyone, uh, in a licensed position hired after the first teacher workday automatically goes onto a temporary contract as part of, of our process. Um, so what you see here, for teachers in MTSS, there are sixty-six folks that are being paid out of ESR at this time. Uh, we have reduced that down, obviously, as you see. For the MTSS folks that are in there doing those jobs, they will simply migrate to open positions that will happen at the end of the school year. So as we look at twenty-four, twenty-five, our MTSS teachers will be moving into open positions that potentially are new because of student enrollment or that just vacate due to temporary contracts. Principals, I would tell you, are already preparing for those moves. Most of our principals already have a plan for what they're going to do with their MTSS coordinator at the end of the year, um, on whether they're going to elect to keep that position out of one of their allotments or whether their, that person's moving back into a teaching role. And quite honestly, a, a good number of those folks have already moved back into teaching roles. They, they know that they, when they signed the contract to take that position, they knew the funding would run out at the end of this school year. Um, other faculty that you see here, so the teachers and then EC psychologists working our way down the list, uh, to school counselor, um, those folks are on temporary contracts. So those are, we, all of those positions are filled on folks with contracts that already expire at the end of this school year. What we will do is if we, uh, i- i- if we have student growth, which we anticipate we will have, and we have openings, those folks would be able to apply just as they would in any other year if you were on a temporary contract. So at the end of a school year, those folks on temp contracts know that their contract is up. They then become, uh, we, what we call them is basically free agents, right? They're able to move to open, apply for and interview open positions that are in the district. So we anticipate we will have vacancies as we always do, that folks will be able to apply and interview for. The custodial, we are working on that right now. We've identified who those folks are. We obviously have some open custodial positions. So we will be shuffling that funding source just a little bit to get those folks in the right spot by the end of the year. Again, doesn't make sense to do that at present because that money is, we, we need to spend that money out. So at the end of the year, we will just be shuffling some folks there into positions that are permanent positions that we already have. And then finally, the mental health data analyst, um, is moving into an open position based on a retirement. We have not made that move yet because obviously that position, um, I believe has come, that position of where the retirement is is local funds. We have the ESR funds to cover this person's salary through the remainder of the school year. It makes fiscal sense to do that, um, to leave that person in the ESR funding. They will simply slide over into the vacant position created by the retirement at the end of the school year, and we will use that as the backfill for that position. That's what our plan is. Um, I am quite honestly not concerned, uh, that we will have spots for all of the folks that you see on this list right now based on either attrition and open positions or growth and open positions that will come from that growth.
Thanks, Dr. Williams. I appreciate that. And, and you know, so just to be clear, you know, we have plans in place to strike a balance, right? Because i- it's a question of making sure that we're not overcommitted in terms of staff and making sure that we expend the grant as well. So there's plans in place, as you heard, uh, to do just that. Uh, there's some, but I would call it limited capacity, uh, for ESR Three to offset part of the current deficit right now. Uh, we've been reducing the staff through a, a plan of attrition. Uh, it's been our plan all year long, as you just heard from Dr. Williams. Um, and then we'll move people to open roles, uh, both in terms of growth and just nat- natural turnover that we have in the organization, uh, that we see at the end of the school year. One final point, and it's not on the slide that I wanted to share with you, um, and this was something that came up in a, in a, in a previous conversation, was we wanted to look at over the past four years where we've had ESR grants available to us. What were the total number of people that at any point were getting paid out of an ESR grant? And then did that create any kind of a burden on our local funds when those grants expired? So it became a really interesting exercise, and I got to credit, um, the federal fund specialist on my team for doing this work because it was a fair amount of it. We had a total of seven hundred and seventy-two people over the past four years that in any one paycheck had a funding source associated with an ESR grant, right? Now, it could be they just only have one, or they could have been there for an extended period of time, but it was seven hundred and seventy-two people. We then boiled down that seven hundred and seventy-two people to look at, is there anybody who's currently that at any point was paid out of a federal grant, an ESR, now working in local? And the answer is yes, twenty-two of the seven hundred and seventy-two. But that only sells part of the story, right? Because now you gotta understand, well, what were the circumstances that led to them being moved to the local funds? And in at least eleven of those situations of the twenty-two, we were able to identify that there had been a vacancy in an already budgeted position that had existed in local. So it wasn't in that case of those eleven that a new position was created that a person was moved to. So in other words, those positions were net neutral to the budget. And I'm working with Dr. Williams and his team to get through a little more of the history on the remaining eleven to see where that translated to.
Pretty close right now.
Yeah. So it, it's, to me, that feels pretty good in the sense that it doesn't look like we created a, a, a lot of largess in the, in the local budget coming off these ESR grants, but with a little more work to do, and I'll provide an update at some point down the road once we've finished out the work on that. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Ms. Escobar? Thank you. Uh, two questions. One, uh, as far as benefits and years of service. So if you are being funded through an ESR grant, uh, and then you end up moving into a full-time role, how does that affect your benefits as far as working for the school district?
It doesn't.
It doesn't? So you get your service.
Your time made out of ESR is, is, is years of service to North Carolina.
Okay, so it's, it doesn't matter if you're temporary or anything?
Does not.
Okay, great, good to hear. And then, um, as far as expenditures for that two hundred thousand, is there a way that we can get a list of, of what, what that will be? I'm just curious, like, I, I understand that you're.
Yeah.
Abiding by the law, that's important.
Yep.
Um, but I would like, I would like to know, um.
Yeah, abiding by the law is sort of like a baseline function for me, right?
Yes, yes. We like, we like to do that around here. Um, but I just, um, I'm just curious what qualifies, and, and just would like to see a list.
So is it possible to, once we expend those funds, have Mr. Penn come back and update the board as to where we spent those funds? Is that okay with the board?
Yeah.
Okay. So I would ask that, um, by the end of the school year, you come back again, give an ESR update.
Okay.
And account for the two hundred and twenty, three hundred and fifty thousand that we think we're going to have.
Yeah, and, and if the number grows, because we've had natural attrition between now and then, we'll, we'll just give you whatever the number is and what, what we did with it.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Ms. Sandage?
So I remember these conversations, um, I think it was a year ago at our retreat, and, you know, trying to make sure that we, um, ensure that nobody, you know, is, if we have available positions, that we can, you know, get those folks into those positions. Can you go back to the previous slide?
This one?
So thank you for the presentation, and everybody that has presented tonight, thank you for the presentation. I did not get to say that, so my apologies. On the left, under August twenty-three, can you tell me where that comes from? What is this information that we're looking at?
So that would have been the people that had a funding source in payroll from the ESR Three grant at that time.
Okay, and then the next one is for December twenty?
Twenty-three, same, same comparison.
Gotcha. So I understood correctly. So when will be the next date that we will see these people either come off of here, go somewhere, when will we see that information?
If, if there's a desire to see it more frequently, we can do that.
I, I just want to make sure that if there is a possibility for somebody to get a job, we know when that happens and where, where that's occurring.
Yes, sir.
I hope that's making sense.
It does.
We need people. We don't need to lose folks, so that's why I'm asking you this question.
Yeah, so I am monitoring that as we have vacancies. I am monitoring that. We are making the shuffle from ESR funding to permanent positions as we have those vacancies. So each time one pops up, I've got folks in my office that are watching and queuing me when those things come through. Um, again, quite honestly, I, I feel very comfortable that we will have enough vacant positions at the end of the year where we will not have folks that will, will be without a position.
And just to close the loop on that, on, once we hear from HR that there's a person leaving who is an ESR-funded position, and the payroll staff is notified of it, and then gets communicated back to my federal fund specialist to say, okay, we've got this opening, reforecast your projection for the end of the year in terms of what's going to be spent, so we know exactly what we're dealing with in terms of available funds.
So what we can do there is the same as we did with the funds, to Mrs. Escobar's request, is to update the board on the ESR status at the end of this, at the end of the school year as well. So we have August twenty-three, December twenty-three, May twenty-three, being updated positions for the board to follow on.
And can you give it to us in this format? I'm, again, just trying to make sure all these folks, um, have somewhere to go if we, if they can. And then this may not be relevant, but it's in my mind, it's on my agenda. Are these folks able to, you know, if they, we can't find something, are we offering them like, you know, drive a bus? Or, you know, something so that we can fill the positions that we know we truly need to fill?
Well, these folks are all licensed positions, so, yeah, they're, they're. What I will say to you is I am very confident that those positions are going to, based on attrition and, um, growth, that those positions are going to kind of hash themselves out as we get to the end.
You see, I'm trying, right?
I do.
Okay.
I will say, to speak to, as I mentioned, the custo, the three custodians, not concerned there, we have openings, we're simply going to move them to spots where we need them.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I think it's clear you've got this under control, and I appreciate the efforts because it's, it's a whole lot higher than that of your, your so-called. So, it's a big difference. Um, again, if we have a ten percent attrition every year anyway, there's going to be more, well, more than sixty-six openings, um, or seventy-nine openings. So I think, I appreciate the work, um, I appreciate the updates. Um, it's just, it's, these are our extra positions, and we'll no longer have these extra positions next year.
Mr. Treadaway?
I, two questions. One, um, uh, and this is very much out of my lane, but I understand that at the federal level, there were negotiations and they talked about clawback from ESR. Are we going to be in, do you know yet? I mean, this is like yesterday.
No, no, I, I, we're, we're fine. The clawback provisions, we're looking at states and, and local entities where they really hadn't touched any of the rest of the money yet.
Yeah, yeah.
And there was a lot of congressional folks who were upset about that, and understandably so.
Yeah.
And we've done a very good job of spending out these grants and actually in advance of their closeout, so I, I'm not concerned about any clawbacks here.
Uh, the other thing is that, um, we, uh, we're losing a real valuable asset in our MTSS, uh, folks. And I know Mrs. Holler is at work figuring out how are we going to, but, uh, I, I do hope we're, at some level, I know this is not necessarily in your purview, but we are looking to, how can we support our students and our teachers, because they, they were doing yeoman work. They are doing yeoman work. And, uh, um, we've talked about a lot of our, uh, coming out of COVID, a lot of the needs. I know they addressed a lot of those things. And, uh, I just don't want that role to leave with them. That we are looking for ways to fill those gaps. And I know that's not necessarily your purview, but, uh, I hope we don't forget that.
I would say that she and I have had some conversations about what that might look like.
Any other questions? Thank you.
See you shortly.
Board members, we'll move to nine point zero one, our policies for approval on first read with Dr. Sandy Ward. Good evening, Dr. Ward.
Dr. Kupicki, Ms. Carey, it's good to see you this evening. I will be resharing some policies that were previously, um, brought to you in October and November. Um, but before I begin that, I, I want to echo the sentiments of those before me in thanking you as our board. As a building principal, we never get to see, unless you're in our buildings, the kind of work that you do. Now that I'm down here, I see you guys all the time in the buildings, two-by-twos, one-on-ones, whatever it is you're doing. Um, community meetings, those types of things, meetings with parents. And so, um, I don't think you get enough credit for the work that you're doing, so thank you for that, and I'm glad I get to see you. Before I begin my policy review, um, I believe, Ms. Adcock, you had a question about school surveys last time we talked. And we found out that Cabarrus County does not conduct or facilitate any protected topic surveys. Um, but I do want to give you some information on some federal and state surveys that our students participate in, okay? So there are various federal and state programs that require schools to conduct surveys of students. Two examples are the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, and that survey asks questions about, related to risky behaviors, um, including substance abuse, mental health issues, inter, um, interpersonal relationships and things of that nature. A second one talks, the Youth Tobacco Survey, um, and the Youth Survey, Youth Survey, asks more about their attitudes and beliefs towards the use of tobacco and those types of things. These surveys are delivered to a small percentage of students, um, at one to three sites, school sites, um, selected by the Center for Disease Control and the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. So those are vetted and even sponsored by larger entities than, than our local school board. So I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that, and parents do have the opportunity to opt out of those surveys if they so choose.
Ms. Lindsay?
Is there any funding that we have to spend in order for our community to participate in? Are, are we paying for these surveys in any way?
I don't think so.
And?
I don't think so.
If they have the ability to opt out, is it something that's required for us to participate in, or is it just something that we chose?
Strongly recommend it, and I think we, we normally, um, uh, participate in these surveys. And like I said, one to three sites, so it could be Harris Road, Cab, uh, Central Cabarrus and West Cabarrus. So it's one to three sites per year when they do, um, conduct the surveys.
The results for those surveys, are they given countywide? Are they just given to each individual school?
So these results go to entities such as the North Carolina, um, uh, partnership that we have. It also goes to the Cabarrus Health Alliance. And we use those in partnership with those entities to conduct studies, to provide, um, services in our community. So when they get data from our schools, they are then able to offer programs and things of that nature.
But no funding comes from us?
And I, I will check on that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't believe so.
Ms. Escobar? Thank you for that information. Uh, I guess my question is then, if it's a federal survey, but the state is saying we have to, we can't give every survey we want to give without people opting, they have to opt in versus opt out. So are we violating state law, new state law, by giving a federal survey?
No. I, I think federal would supersede, and I also think this is. No. I think federal would supersede, and I also think this is not, what do you call it? The word is optional. Could be optional by schools. But I do know that Cabarrus County has traditionally participated. But I would check in on the funding.
Right.
And I don't believe that it supersedes. I think federal would supersede state.
If it's a required federal survey, then it would supersede the state Parents Bill of Rights notification requirements.
Right.
If it's optional, we need to look at it and see the linkage because sometimes these, sometimes federal requirements are put upon us, called mandates, because of the funding that we get.
Exactly.
And then, you know, maybe that we have to participate in something a certain percentage of the time, so we just need to look.
I can have that for you next week.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And the funding question.
Okay.
Ms. Sandage?
So I have the same question, and I guess moreover, I wanna understand if they, do they have to opt in, or they don't? It doesn't matter. Like, it's a federal requirement to that they opt in, or this is just North Carolina. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Under the state Parents' Bill of Rights, if it's, if it is what is defined as a protected information survey, then under state law, parents have to opt in after being given 10 days' notice of what the survey is. So you think mental health, you think political beliefs, there's a list.
I got that.
If it is a federal survey, if we are required by the feds to give the survey, there may be an opt-out provision in that survey, but it is not an opt-in.
Okay, that, thank you.
Does that help you?
Yes.
It does, but I still wanna know, like, what, if it's because of funding that we received? I'm trying to figure that part out. I think you're gonna collect some information, right?
Yeah, we'll just have to work.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely. Sure, sure. Okay, so we had a lot of policies that we have reviewed in the months of October and November. So I wanted to just kinda review those again. It says up for first read. Madam Chair, if this is acceptable, I will go through the required points of each one, since we've already pretty much heard all of the policies.
That sounds great, thank you.
Okay, we are going to start with Policy 1310, 4002, which is the Parental Involvement Survey. This policy was substantially revised, and we showed this, I think, back in November. So lots of revisions there that were required. There were some minor editorial changes that were recommended. I believe our committee elected to accept all changes that were put up for this particular policy. Any questions? Same as before. I'm gonna go to Policy 3540. Again, nothing has changed, except we put all of our policies on our Cabarrus County letterhead, Mr. Walter, which is what the request was, and you were exactly right. 3540, Comprehensive Health Education Program. We did, it was strongly recommended to add Provision A, and we did do that. We added the legal references, which were required, and we did update the cross-references, which were recommended. So same as before, you can see everything that was added in red, and anything that's crossed out was deleted. Next one is 4335, Criminal Behavior. We changed the requirements for reporting to parents when their child is suspected to be a victim of a crime. It was required, so it's in there. And it was required to update the legal references and footnotes were informational. Okay, 4720, we just talked a little bit about surveys of students. We added a reference to state law in the very first sentence, which was required. It was also required to change the parental notification and consent requirements in Section A, based on new state law, so that was done as well. We added a new Section B, which was also required. There were some minor editorial changes that were recommended, and the legal references were required. 6120 is Student Health Services, and it included minor changes to the language, which we did, except we updated the legal references, and there is a note there, and the footnote with information only. Again, all these are the same as what was presented. 7300, Staff Responsibilities. We added an employee responsibility to support parental involvement and never to encourage a student to withhold information from their parents. That was strongly recommended, and we accepted that as a team. We updated the legal references, and footnotes were updated as well. Okay, moving on to Spring PLS. Mr. Penn talked a lot about the participation by historically underused businesses. We went through this one. Reorganized and reworded the language throughout the policy for clarity. We accepted those recommendations. We talked a little bit about encouraging the use of small businesses. We accepted those. We updated the reporting requirements in Section B, which was required. We updated legal and cross-references as well. 6402, did I say the wrong thing?
No, no. We just didn't have on the screen.
Okay, sorry. Am I going too fast?
No, not at all.
Okay. You guys have heard this. Our promise, nothing has changed.
Madam Chair, I had a question on this one.
Everything.
I had a question on this one. So on the 6402, we've changed it from the board adopts the following verifiable percentage to the board aspires for 10% of the total annual value. Is it aspirational goal any different than something that we've adapted? It's an adopted goal, was, was previously in the policy. Policy announces aspires.
We said aspires to. What does it say here?
It now says aspires to, or aspires for. Does that substantiate?
So Gil, I would say that aspiring is a, if you're aspiring to do something, that doesn't mean you're committed to it. Adopting means that you're committed to it.
So it was adopting, it's now aspired for, so it's a 10% goal. I mean, it's pretty common.
So what asks for board guidance on this, or Gil, recommendation from the legal side? If it was adopted, why would we change?
Are you asking me, why did the policy committee?
Not why we changed, I mean, is there...
There's not a legal requirement.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah. But the state statute there, 143, 128, is the state, part of the State Purchasing Guide, and it encourages governmental bodies to work with historically underutilized businesses. And so, the aspires to language is legal, it's fine.
Okay, so we're in line with the law. Thank you. Yeah, if we're good with it, I'm good with it.
I thought, yeah, go ahead.
I did, I did. Yeah, I still, I just, I don't quite understand the language here and the purpose of this. So, if we are not purchasing goods and services with regard to race, creed, origin, sex, religion, but then, in the statement above, we're stating that we are going to look at these businesses based on the color of the person that owns it, whether or not it's a woman, whether or not they're disabled. It doesn't make sense to me that we, it, it's hypocritical. I mean, are we judging these people based on the color of their skin, or are we not? That's, that's one of the things that I have a problem with this, with this policy. Just my opinion.
So was it, I think it was your comment last time to say aspires to? Because we didn't think...
I didn't say, I didn't make a comment on how to word it.
Okay.
I'm saying, as a whole, this policy makes zero sense to me. We are either judging you based on the color of your skin, or we're not. And I don't, so I don't like that policy for that very reason.
So is there any action that you want to change on this particular policy?
I don't think we need this policy, to be quite honest with you, I really don't. I don't see the necessity of it. And my thought is that if we're going to judge everybody based on what they, is the best service for us, based on what the best good is for us, we should not be judging them on anything else. And in my opinion, that's what this policy does.
Gil, there's still legal standards, correct?
Yeah, there's, I'm sorry. The state statute requires that state and local government entities still work toward the utilization of what's known as HUBs, Historically Underutilized Businesses. So, since this is a first read, I'm happy to go back and double-check that. But I think we have, under state law, an obligation to address this in policy.
Should we table it until next board meeting, so you can review it?
Well, you don't have to table it, because this is coming to you on a first read, so you're not taking action on it this evening. The action would come on the...
Point taken, point taken.
Yeah, next meeting.
So do you recommend that we put this on action and take it off consent once we go through all of them?
Well, I'm assuming Ms. Lindsay's gonna say that, since she opposes it, so...
Yes, do I need to make that now?
No, no, but I think it's fine to put it on action.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, where was I?
So, I have a question too, since we're looking at this. When we discuss various projects that construction is doing, there is a specific reference to HUBs. And how does, how is that determined by this policy? Like, are there other things that we need to look at if we are changing, if we are, you know, referencing things that need to change from this policy?
So quarterly, we have to report hub based on not specifically what we do, but what our contractors are doing. Because they're the ones that are contracting with all the hub businesses. So they, they track it, and then they send us a report, and we put that in every, I think it's every quarter, I believe, Ms. Sandage.
And why do we have to do that? Why is there a reference to historically underutilized businesses if we're questioning why this policy is here and we don't need it?
That's a good question.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just thought...
I, you know, just, in all my life doing construction, we've always tried to be, engage minority businesses in what we do. And this is probably just, kinda follows through with that.
So we don't have to?
No, no, I think our board policy requires us to. So, our board policy does.
Right, right, but we're questioning that right now. And every time I've seen you come up and we talk about construction, you reference HUBs, right? So we're saying that this policy possibly is not needed. Do I understand that correctly? And so is there, is there a correlation between us having to report that and this policy and how it reads, is what I'm trying to figure out. I hope I'm making sense, 'cause y'all are looking at me crazy. Okay, I am, so, do we need to find that out? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's all yours.
Ms. Escobar?
Just to understand the policy process and updating, from what I understand, when we update our policy, it's based on recommendations from the state association. So the state association becomes aware from the General Assembly what laws have been updated, and then they make recommendations to us. Our committee internally reviews that, discusses that, decides what's right for Cabarrus County, and then you come to us and provide these recommendations. So I understand that we need to ask our lawyer, but at the same time, at the state association level, a lawyer has been making these recommendations to us.
Many lawyers, yes.
Okay, many lawyers. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I will say that in, as I mentioned earlier, in Chapter 143 of the state statute, the state has a verifiable 10% goal for what the statute calls minority businesses, which essentially translates to the newer term, Historically Underutilized Businesses, 'cause that's, there's a large umbrella of what constitutes minority for this purpose. I need to just go back and double-check how that flows down. But Mr. Cohn is right, I've been doing this for 40 years, and from the get-go, for every construction project we've ever had, we've had to report it on a quarterly basis. And so, in addition to looking for underutilized businesses, if I remember correctly, Rogers would be an example of a general contractor who is a female-owned or controlled business. But they have to report to us, and we have to report upstream to the Department of Administration on a quarterly basis. But I'll go back and double-check the requirements.
I'm just trying to figure out, for the purpose of this being questioned, if we don't have the most accurate information in here, or what we are supposed to be doing, then, you know, why is it even here? What is the policy committee doing to make sure we have all of this information? And I get what Pam is saying, too. We get this from a bunch of lawyers that we pay a service for from the North Carolina School Board Association, correct? And this is what they're suggesting that we do, and they do this for every single policy to follow the law, right? All right.
Go right on.
So is that for action?
Yes.
Okay, got it. All right, so next one is 6430, Purchasing Requirements for Equipment, Materials, Supplies. We modified the language there, and we included some recommended changes. Namely, we talked about the Chief Financial Officer, changed it from Purchasing Officer. So we went in and kinda made some changes there, just to make it clear. Okay, also, from Spring PLS, we have 5,008 automated phone and text messaging. We had a lot of people looking on this one, our Technology and Accountability and Communications folks, to rewrite that policy, to add the recommendations there. We accepted most of the recommendations that are there. Okay. Now, I will, well, no, I'll go into the Fall PLS. We have five policies that contain minor technical edits. So we wanted to kinda get our technical edits out of the way for the fall. So 4130, Discretionary Admission. We made some legal reference changes there. 4150, and these will all be down in the legal area, which is at the bottom of each policy in red. Updated legal references for 4150, which is School Assignment. Mr. Walter's, this is one of your favorites. 4334, Our Use of Unmanned Aircrafts have been changed again. And we updated the legal references there. 6230, School Meal and Competitive Food Standards. We looked there and made sure that we made the recommendations. 7820, which is Personnel Files, we updated the legal references. Then I'll go back to 3610, which was tabled way back when. So we have now, we've looked at that policy quite a bit. If you want to go to 3210, the bottom. Lots of discussion on 3210, Parental Guardian, Parental Inspection and Objection to Instructional Materials. It was lots of, lots of discussion around this. The PLS update that was sent down was very brief and concise on what it determined to be relevant. The team chose to, at first, keep the very brief and concise introduction, and we added the Cabarrus County procedure that our Literature Review Committee worked on really, really hard for like six months. And after some reflection, we went back to the table and decided we would just accept all of the policy that was written by our legal team and the Literature Review Committee. And as you can see here in red, we added the language that makes this policy legal and compliant with the Parent Bill of Rights. So, this is what we've come up with. So anything you see there has been added through the PLS. But our policy is basically intact for 3210. So we felt comfortable landing back on what the original policy was. So, after lots of discussion, this is where we are. And as you can see, none of that was changed, all of this is black, right? So no changes in the meat of it. It was just a lot of kinda talking points right there in the middle, letters A and B. Just to honor our, the work of the committee. Any questions there?
Sandy, I thought we kept all of A, and that we didn't cross anything out. Last I saw this policy, all of A was included. We didn't cross anything out. We only added in the red, so the recommendation was to keep everything to the policy. So the recommendation was to keep everything to the policy, and we added the red, so that we honored the work of the literature committee.
Okay, so we can do that, so that means-
So A would not change. The only thing, the only amendment of this policy would be the red for the recommendations from the PLS. Everything will stay the same.
So parents who would like to inspect, so we added that in.
No, what I'm saying is above that, although there were no crossouts on this policy. We only added in what the PLS asked.
Correct, yes.
So these crossouts you see, this is a typo, folks. This is not accurate. There is nothing changed in this policy. The only thing that's changed in this is the red additions from the PLS.
Adding the red, yes, that's correct.
We will clean it up to have it on there for you tomorrow morning, first thing. So that policy, again, is unchanged with the exception of the PLS updates.
Adding in red, yes.
Thank you.
Sure. So a lot of back and forth there.
Ms. Andage?
So black crossed out means it's leaving? And it's being changed by the red?
When you cross lines on a policy, it means it's being eliminated. When you put the red in, it means it's language being added. So this policy should read, nothing crossed out, just red addition.
Okay, so can you go back to 6402 for me, please? I'm sorry, do you have a question about that?
Can I say something else about that policy first? Go back to the- The only thing that would stay crossed out is that some materials available through the internet and used in individual classes to provide up-to-date information or information on current events may not be available. We took that out because right now, anything that we offer in our core curriculum has to be available to parents. So the state has asked us to take that clause out, do you understand? So we can't say, oh, we got it from the internet, so you don't have a right to see it. We have to be able to provide all core instructional materials to parents. So that piece would have to stay. The top piece where it says, parents have a right, that's still under U.S. Code 1232. That stays. That will stay. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, we'll just put this on action.
Sure.
Yeah, and I'm okay. You don't have to go back to 6402, I forgot that's on action, thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I'd like to add 1310, 4720 to action as well, since there's substantial changes. And I have a personal objection to 6230, the definition of a school day, so I'd like to see that on action too.
Which policies, Megan?
1310, parent involvement.
Okay.
Substantial changes to that. The one we talked about was surveys. And then 6230, where it talks about a definition of a school day, which doesn't make any sense.
Thank you.
Can we go back, can I ask you a clarifying question? On 1310, 44,002, what's the objection there?
There's no objection, I just want the public to have an opportunity to say this is important. We've done a lot of changes to those policies. So they may have a comment next week, they may not. I'd like to hear it if they do.
It'll just be moved to action.
Okay, okay, just checking.
Ms. Andage?
So we've got a few board members that are on the policy committee, and there have been some significant changes that have occurred over the last few months. And I just wanted to see if there were any thoughts that they had, any experiences, anything that they wanted to comment of what's been shared tonight and then put on action for next week.
I have been encouraged, impressed, wowed by the expertise on the policy committee, because these policies range from technology to finance to everything. So I think it's always a yeasty, healthy conversation led by Dr. Ward. I applaud the work they do. Especially this last few months has not been necessarily the easiest because of responding to things that came in after the school year started by the state. So I can attest that there are a lot of voices heard and a lot of things are taken in consideration for any changes, additions, or edits that you see.
And I also think Dr. Ward does a wonderful job of facilitating this committee, to make sure we have representation from all different areas of the school system. Everything from transportation to mental health to HR to legal. So there is a good discussion on these items. I think they get a lot of time on some of the more critical changes. And I guess I am impressed with the time that's spent on it. Again, it's the board decision, these are board policies, so it's their recommendations to us.
Okay, any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
From the clerical area down here on our end of the table, I want to make certain that I understand the policies that the board wants to put on the action agenda. My notes say 1310, 3210, 4720, 6402, and I thought I heard 6230.
So say those again.
1310, 3210, 4720, 6402, and 6-
20.
Yeah, 6230.
6230.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions about any policies? Okay, so is the board in agreement to put all of the remaining policies on consent, which would exclude 1310, 6230, 6402, 3210, and 4720? So move. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we'll move to 9.03 with the restart continued authorization approval. Oh, sorry, I missed one. 9.02, calendar revision. Sorry about that, Mr. Legrand.
No problem, thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everyone. Just want to pass along some of the sentiments that you've heard earlier, but it is sincere. I want to thank you for your service and commitment to our school district and being willing to step out and make the tough choices that come along with being a school board member, but also supporting our students as they progress toward success. So thank you for all that you do this month and every month. So I am coming to you tonight with a proposed minor revision to our 2024-2025 early college calendar. So that's not this year's calendar, that is next year's early college calendar. I just want to clarify that. The early college calendar currently lists May 23rd and May 24th as graduation dates. That was entered as a placeholder last spring when we were building this calendar. Well, it has been determined that the actual graduation date should be listed as May 17th, as we typically hold early college graduations the day after the RCCC graduation. And the reason we do that, and that's going to occur on May 16th, 2025, the reason we do that is this allows our families that may be in town traveling to see one graduation, they can stay and see both. And so the May 16th will be RCCC, the May 17th will be our early college graduation. And again, this proposed revision will only affect the early college graduation that is listed on the calendar for the 2024-2025 school year. So we're just, it's a minor revision, it's listed on there, but we just wanted to make sure we were getting this approved by you guys.
So board are in agreement to put this on consent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go to 9.03, our restart continued authorization approval with Dr. Jonathan Bowers. Welcome back.
Hey, and good evening once again, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Picky. So full disclosure, I was informed, this is a different remote, by the way. So, just wanted to have that on record. So tonight, we're bringing you forth an ask to continue to operate the schools that we've identified in Cabarrus County schools as restart schools underneath the restart model. So just as a bit of a review, restart, if you'll recall, you may not be familiar with it since its inception, restart was launched back in 2016, 2017 by the state of North Carolina as an effort to be able to offer a reform model for schools that have been identified as recurring low performing. So there are four true reform models that are offered. Restart is one, there's the transformation model, there is the school closure model, and then the fourth model is actually the turnaround model. Each of the other three, other than restart, are a little bit more extreme in terms of what it entails to be able to initiate some of the school turnaround efforts. Restart is one in which schools have an opportunity to be able to operate with charter-like flexibilities. So we currently have five schools in Cabarrus Counties that are operating with these flexibilities. And you'll see here that those flexibilities identify the state, our budget, employment requirements, calendar, their standard course of study, and their local assessments that they would administer. So this chart right here gives you an idea of what are the descriptors for each of those flexibility options and what might be some examples of some of those options that are currently utilized by the schools themselves. So when we go from budget, we talk about schools being able to say, hey, we've identified a specific need within our school because of this particular area of focus and this problem of practice, so they can actually expend some of their monies on professional development to train staff and to be able to create some systems in place that would certainly play towards more of a positive or greater culture outcome. When we look at employment requirement, one of the opportunities that restart schools have is that they're not held by the same standard as non-restart schools are from an employment licensure standpoint. So they're able to fill critical needs positions in some of these vacancies by individuals who may not be licensed. And just for what it's worth, all of our restart schools exercised that particular option. They've been able to fill some key vacancies and due to some individuals coming that are, we would say, qualified, but they just haven't been licensed to be able to serve in those capacities. And then they move through the licensure process subsequently after gaining employment. Our human resources team has been phenomenal working with individuals in that regard and making sure that we do have students with quality instruction from them, from an adult, each and every day. When we look at the calendar flexibility, that's a chance to be able to deviate from what the school system's normal calendar may be. The standard course of study and the assessment, we do not see those options exercised locally. Again, I just mentioned them because they're identified in statute as opportunities. But if a school or a school district chose to go in a different direction other than the North Carolina standard course of study, they could adopt a curricular framework. It would have to align with the North Carolina standard course of study, meaning the basic standards, and it would have to identify the same goals, the objectives, and the expected outcomes. But they could at least adopt a different, more of a program model or a different, certainly, option moving forward. When we look at the schools, I've identified those for you, so you're familiar exactly with what our restart schools are that have participated in the model since its first year. All five of these schools are part of Cohort One. So right now, we're in the review phase, if you will, for Cohort One to determine whether or not they'll be authorized to continue to operate as permitted by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. For your convenience, I've outlined here just some of those flexibilities that each of these schools are utilizing and how they've been able to tie that back into their school improvement efforts. I think it's important to note that this happens alongside school improvement planning. So really, the two are married and they go hand in hand with how they're continuing to drive and how they're continuing to produce achievement and outcomes for students and also creating better opportunities for our learners at each of these sites. So again, you can see that there are an array of flexibilities that are offered, a little bit, again, flexibility being the term, with variance specific to what the needs of the school might be. But there are similarities in terms of what those categorizations might be. You see all of them using the calendar flexibility option, to which we bring before you every spring to say, here's how these schools have identified their use of additional early release days, specifically for professional development. You see each of them using some sort of budget flexibility option, and as I mentioned, the employment requirement there in place as well across the board. So, why am I here? Well, the purpose is, is that we have to ask for board approval to continue to operate. When restart was initially approved in the fall of, I would imagine, 2016, the Board of Education at the time would have approved the pursuit or the application for the schools that we've identified here in Cohort One to be considered for restart. The state of North Carolina acknowledged and granted that. So five years later, here we are, more than five years, because of COVID, there was a bit of a delay. But here we are in the review year to say, okay, in order to continue to move forward, certainly, board action would be needed and board approval would be needed to have these flexibilities still in place. I've included this for you, just so you know what the workflow authorization is like. And what it allows for is there to be a myriad or multiple pathways for a school to be considered eligible to continue to operate. So if you start from the left of the chart itself, the first identifier that had to be met based off of data from the 22-23 school year was, was the school itself recurring, still a low-performing school, or is it no longer a recurring low-performing school? So that was the first litmus test. So depending upon which of the criteria, those five schools that I outlined earlier would have met, that would have then now put in motion where they move to the next sequence, the next determining factor. The next determining factor then is, what was the growth status for the school itself? All of our schools that were currently in this model would either meet growth or exceed growth. Okay, so they would move through that pathway to the next tier. Then they look at the achievement score. What was the achievement score change of the school from the baseline year? Which was, again, the first baseline year would have been that 2017-18 year. 1617 would have been the first year of application, 1718 becomes that baseline year. So what was the data change from that year to where we are now? And essentially, if the school's performance went up, they would be granted continued authorization. I will summarize this by saying, one of the things that we were able to leverage with each of our schools is that next column, and that's the subgroup growth. Every one of our restart schools had 50% or more of their student subgroups meet or exceed growth this past academic year. If that is the case, then the state of North Carolina recognizes that warrants continued authorization. And that's more or less what restart schools are designed to do, to show that there is progress being made within these schools and there are gains being made for learners. And it's not always measured by what is going to be an absolute score or a school performance rating or some other measure that is deemed to be very quantitative in nature. It looks at student growth and it says, are you serving groups of students across the board? And are we seeing that growth play out in terms of their performance? And the answer to that is unequivocally yes. So when you think there are nine subgroups that certainly a school could have within their school makeup and profile, to be able to say 50% or more of those across each of these five schools is being met or exceeded is certainly noteworthy. So there's the authorization timeline. The process really began back in the summer, when the district had developed more or less a first draft, if you will, of what our self-study is. That's just a reflection of the journey of where we've come from, what the support has been in place. There's been some transition throughout, we will say that. But being able to have a chance to reflect upon that and include that was part of this progression throughout. Then you see in September, the schools submitted what their school of reflection was. And that school of reflection was just more of a five-year-plus review period of how they'd used restart, what have been the flexibilities, what have been the gains that they've seen, and what are some of the outcomes they're now experiencing. So they included that with their submission to the North Carolina Department of Public Construction. October accountability data was released. And then in November, the preliminary results came out as to whether or not schools would be allowed to continue to operate based on whether or not they met one of the identified criteria. That was the chart I just explained earlier. And as I explained to you, every single one of our schools, 50% or more of their subgroups met or exceeded growth this last academic year, and that's a qualifier. And so you see now with January, bring before the board a consideration for review, and then ultimately, board approval would then be needed in order for us to continue to operate for the next five-year cycle under restart. So I pause there for any questions that you may have.
Ms. Escobar?
Thank you. So to clarify, if it wasn't required for the board to be involved in this process, according to the state standards, they would be reauthorized?
Yes, ma'am, that is absolutely 100% correct.
Okay, but we're part of the process.
That is part of our submission, is that when we turn in our final declaration of intent to continue, we have to note the date in which the board approved to continue to operate.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Lindsey?
Do we anticipate any of this to change with the redistricting of the schools as far as some of the outcomes that we have in each one of these schools? far as some of the outcomes that we have in each one of these schools? It, it might change
Sue.
Different kids in the schools with the redistricting.
Yes, ma'am.
So what I'm asking is, do you, do you anticipate that that could potentially change which of our schools need to be restart schools?
So, great question. So the ones that we bring for you today were the ones that were initially identified. Now, one of the opportunities we do have is to say, each and every year, the state of North Carolina does have an application process to include more schools in the models moving forward. I believe they're up to cohorts six right now, if I'm not mistaken, that are included. So there are future opportunities if a school shall be identified or should be identified as a recurring low-performing school. Now with realignment, you mentioned that because that was an important factor here. Several of our schools have been impacted, when we think since the 2016-17 school year, when this was first set in motion. Again, you think about some of the realignment efforts that have changed. We've seen demographic changes and we have seen shifts in each and every one of these schools. And sometimes those are, they use that in their school reflection on progress, they may note of that. So could we anticipate some similar shifts and changes? Possibly. But one of the benefits of restart is it does allow for some of those flexibilities to be put in place such that a school can identify when those shifts happen. And when there are patterns that emerge and specific needs that have to be addressed, they can be responsive to that immediately.
But as a board, we only have to vote on this every five years?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. It's, it's during the actual reauthorization cycle.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sandage?
So, two questions. What is PBIS?
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry, I apologize for the acronym, the Positive Behavior Intervention Systems.
Okay. And then the other question was, so, in five years, the expectation is that the schools won't need to be on this restart program again?
Well, I, I would counter that by saying, what we would hope is that if we find that the schools are still continuing to progress and show gains and still serving students to the degree that they are, continue to operate under restart, because that would certainly indicate that efforts are working. So again, I know that's a tough prediction there, but one of the things the state of North Carolina would, is gathering information on us to say, are these having the intended results and are we seeing this change across the board with the restart models? And for one of our schools, just so you know, and you may be aware of this, and I'm sure you are, Royal Oaks School of Arts, for example, was highlighted as a flagship restart school back in December by the state of North Carolina. They actually came and did a site visit and hosted an event, and they were actually showcased as one of those exemplar schools that really have some innovative practices.
So you would expect for that school, or that type of school, not being specific, to not need restart again and again and again? I'm trying to understand, I'm sorry.
I think, I think what he's trying to say is, I don't, if, if the model is working and we're seeing success, we would continue the model. You can always come off of it, but if the model is working, we're seeing success. Royal Oaks is a great example. We're seeing a lot of success there. So much so, the state wanted to come in and, we invited other districts from across the state to come in and see what they're doing there as well. So it's kind of a yes-no. Yes, you can come off it, and probably no, you wouldn't if it's working, you're having success.
So I'm trying to just articulate in my mind, and maybe even for the public, that restart is a good thing, because when you talk about continually low-performing schools, you know, that rings about this, this red light for folks.
Yes, ma'am.
So I don't want that to be seen as a bad thing.
Understood.
That's what I'm trying to make sure we clarify.
Yes, ma'am. And what I will say is that these wonderful things happening at each and every one of these schools, as all of our schools are, but this is a positive, is what I would offer.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I think you've pretty much answered most of my questions in your presentation and your emails. Thank you for that. The only question I have here is, this is different than the actual program that's at the school. It doesn't necessarily mean the same thing. So if, like, we've got rid of the IB, IB program, but we're still a restart school, we're still
Yes, sir, that is accurate.
Wanting flexibility.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Same with Royal Oaks, as an arts-focused school, that doesn't necessarily have to do with the restart.
Yes, sir, you're absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, is the board in agreement to put this on our consent agenda? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We will move to 9.04, our budget summary and board report. And welcome back, Mr. Philip Penn. Welcome back.
Thank you so much. And if you'll indulge me with a quick comment on the prior topic, which Dr. Bowers didn't mention, and he may not have seen it in his email today, we were actually invited by the State Department of Public Education to help them with a professional learning network on restart schools by recording a session on our, how we do it here in Cabarrus County for their asynchronous model. And to quote the email, it said, because we operate with transparency and earned authority. So I look forward to doing our Billy May's infomercial with you on restart school models going forward here. But, no, I, I, and I say that in a flip manner, but I don't mean it that way. I mean, the fact that we're recognized as a flagship school and they're asking us to do this means that we are doing things correctly, and that is 99 and a half percent him. I, I only take the, the little piece, it's the budget, right? So, but that, that is good news. So let me transition real quickly into the, the budgetary update for the month, and you'll see that there's two items up for, for board vote tonight. If we can start with the one that's, which one is it? School year '24 updated, I think that's the one we want to go to first, the very first one up, go up one? Yeah. Yep, that's it. So one of the things that we've been working on for the past couple of weeks now, pretty aggressively, is figuring out how to close the budget gap that we've been describing to you for the past six or eight weeks now. And I, I have to recant the statement that I made at the December meeting when I said I didn't expect to find any big, big bullets, and then about a week later, we started to identify what turned into a big bullet. So with that in mind, one of the things that we did identify, and this came about as an analysis of our cash flow, we tend to run tight on cash in December after paying in the first half of our annual supplements to teachers right at the end of November. So one of the things we started looking at, well, where are our available cash balances? Because we knew we had them. And, and through that process, we'd identified that the hospitalization account had about four and a half million in cash in a non-interest-bearing account. And our analysis was that there was far more cash than what was needed to be sustained in that account. And in fact, you know, we saw that there was an opportunity to take about $3 million out of that account, use it as an appropriation of fund balance for the year. That would both impact positively our cash flow for the, for the month and for the, for the next couple of months, but also then would help alleviate what we have in there for an anticipated deficit for this year. So we did discuss with our internal, external auditors, who provided this guidance on how to record the transaction. We've looked at all our claims for, and modeled those out for the remainder of the year. So I feel very comfortable about this. And one of the things I should highlight is that this was not part of the 7.2 or 7.3 million in fund balance we discussed at the, at the last board meeting. This actually exists, and the way the accounting works, without taking it too far into the weeds, is the four and a half million had effectively an offset in anticipated accounts payable. So it was effectively showing a zero fund balance. So what we're saying is, we're reestimating what the amount of that account payable is going to be. It doesn't change the cash value at four and a half million, but we don't think the reserve needs to be as high as it was at four and a half. We're more comfortable saying a million and a half. And in fact, we looked at this pretty closely to say that we expect that cash balance to grow over the remainder of the year. So this first resolution that you have in front of you at the suggestion of our external auditors, the key point is looking at what's in the second column, local current budget expense, where if you remember, that was 5.03 million as a deficit for the, the first time we passed the budget resolution. They're suggesting we take that down to 2.03 million, and there's probably going to be one that follows on after this to adjust the beginning so that we can reestablish that we had a balanced budget and anticipated going into the year, right? So that's the nature of the first resolution. Questions on that or questions on the hospitalization or the cash before we move to what becomes amendment number one?
Ms. Sandage?
So I always got questions about that fund balance, right?
Yes.
So, and I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly. So annually, and I'm not sure if that money accrued over time in that, in the figure, the four-point something or another million figure, does that add to our cash, our fund balance going forward? Like, is that a way for us to build that fund balance going forward? Or this acute accrued over some length of time, and that's why it's so much? That's what I didn't understand.
It definitely accrued over a significant period of time, that I'll confirm. But I am suggesting that we use it to close the budget gap that we have this year. So it will be a one-time use.
Okay, so we don't see that adding to the, the fund balance going forward?
Correct.
Do we see, like, not putting so much money into that account going forward?
So part two of that exercise is making sure that the rates that we charge are, are accurate, right? And, and what I will tell you is, we did examine this in some level of detail, that the state prescribes for us the rates that we charge both employees and that we contribute as a board to their, their healthcare costs. But there's a second piece of that that's, applies to dental where we're self-insured. Now, we've looked at claims activity and the amount that we charge employees for the past 18 months, and those are very, very closely matched. What we did see quite a while ago, and this is, stretches back several years, is that there was local cash that was put into the account initially. I'm of the opinion that there was too much cash put into that account, and that over time, we had favorable development on our dental claims. But not to the extent that it was a million dollars a year. It built up slowly over time. But what I'm suggesting is, if we leave the cash there, it does nothing for us. It's not necessary to keep that cash there. And again, it's non-interest-bearing, so it's not even making us any income just sitting there in the bank. But this provides an opportunity for us to close that budget gap for this year without putting additional pressure on what we're cutting to get down to the, the budget gap closure.
I understood that part. I was just not understanding if that helps
Yes.
us in the future, or if we've learned something that we can apply that helps us for the future. And you, you answered my question, though.
I, I suspect it gives us an opportunity to look at all the cash balances a little more closely. And, and frankly, until fund balance became an issue this year, there probably wasn't as much need to pay attention to that account.
Any other questions? Mr. Floyd?
Where are we getting the reserve requirement we used before that we think was inflated? Where did we come up with that? And then, and how do we?
Couldn't tell you.
I guess I could, could ask you this.
Yeah.
More, more to the point, how do we come up with a new number? And do we feel, how do we feel good about that?
Yeah, I, I think what we do is, we model out the cash flow on expected claims based on past activity, right? I mean, I come from an insurance background, right? So this is somewhat in the space that I'm used to, although I did the financial piece, not the actual arrow piece. But the actual owners would tell you that you would look at actual claim experience to determine what does the future look like going forward. And then you try to make sure that your rates accurately reflect, and you're trying to manage to a zero, right? That, that would be the ideal, right? That if you're already holding reserves, then what you're trying to reflect is, what do I need to charge in terms of rates going forward to maintain a zero balance beyond my reserves?
Okay, I just want to make sure the public understands, we're not arbitrarily changing the number to fit our need. This is a very real calculation.
No, and I, and I wouldn't be proposing this unless I had a good deal of comfort around being able to do it this way.
Ms. Lindsay?
Thank you for answering my question about the, the same thing with the benefits. My question is, with this, does this have anything to do with the current people that manage our benefits right now?
No, I would say not.
Okay.
I mean, there, there's always good business practice to examine that on, on, on an ongoing basis. Doesn't mean you want to change it every year, but it's something you can look at periodically over time, the way you would look at any other vendor. As an example, we need to go out for new copiers within the next year, that's something that we're working on right now. So I think it does make sense to test the market for that stuff.
Uh huh.
But when you're self-insured, the claim is the claim to some respect, right?
Right.
So you can have a buildup in this account because you've modeled, say, for instance, $2 million with the claims, but you only have 1.8 million come in, or you only have 1.9 million come in. And, and you get these small incremental bumps in what's in the available cash that's in the account, without it being something like your, your rates are way out of line with where your experience is.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Ms. Sandage?
So did we identify the length of time that this has happened? And then like, and you might have answered this already. So for example, next year, we'll know how much and how much does not need to be in there?
Well, this is, this is something we have the ability to look at every month, right? Because we see claims on a monthly basis, we get the invoice for those claims, we pay the claims out of that account through our third-party administrator that administers that for us. So this is something we have, and we look at it on an ongoing basis.
I think you're good to move forward.
All righty. All right, so if we can go to the one that says amendment number one. It's probably summary board report number one. Mended Budget Resolution Number One, it's the one on the bottom, thank you. So one of the things that emerged out of this process, I need to give you a better roadmap on all these exhibits that I'm sending to you, so that you know what you're looking at. The, I'll, I'll take the hit for that and not providing something that was a little more narrative in nature to say, here, look at this document and this is what it means. So you probably are familiar with this in terms of these budget amendments, there were a lot of them last year, this is a continuation of that process. And really what this tries to reflect is, you snap a line in the sand at a particular time, and you're trying to reflect all the changes that you know about up until that point, right? So there's a number of changes that took place in Fund One, Fund Two, Fund Three, and Fund Eight. Four, Five, Six, and Seven really didn't have any changes to it. So Fund Eight, that's the easy one, that's the $3 million that we just talked about. So what you're going to wind up seeing is an increase in the revenue, and we're going to move expense over there to, to help alleviate the current period of deficit, the $200,000, $200,000. That one's pretty straightforward. In the federal grants, you're going to see minor changes to the tune of, I think it was $35,000 or $38,000. That all relates to a, an increase that we got in our Title III grant from the federal government. So that was a good thing. Revenues are increasing, expenses are going to increase as an offset to that, as we figure out how to fully expend that grant. In Fund Two, you're going to see a change of $680,000. And what that reflects is a discussion that we have with county, that they're fully covering the anticipated increase in cost that we have for charter schools. So, you know, there was a good conversation that I had with the county leadership team right before the Christmas holiday around talking through some budgetary issues and how to restructure some of the presentation and them going forward, but they, they said they were going to cover that. And that reflects the additional funding that they're picking up out of their contingency fund. There was a conversation around, you know, can we be more and more precise around how do we budget the amount of people that are going to charter schools? And I'm like, all right, well, it's hard for me to commit to that, right? We tend to focus on who's coming here, but I'll have that conversation with Frances Lane and her team and, and say, okay, you know, give me your best guess on what we see in charters going forward. But they're, they're, they're taking care of that. The big piece of this that you should be aware of is, of course, on the state. Now, it's not all bad news, but there's some bad news. So one of the things that came through that increased the deficit was they changed our allotment based on our actual ADM in month one and month two. So if you remember, when we were talking about enrollment data, you know, we grew to 35,200, I think was our day 40 enrollment. The state had initially projected a much higher number than that. Now, I saw, and my team saw, a revision that had taken place where they cut the allotment from like 1,608 teachers down to 1,600. And I thought that was the ADM change. I was wrong. So they actually cut the teacher allotment down, I think about another 15 or 16 positions because their projection was like 1,100 kids more than what we actually had show up, right? So that wasn't great news. That was like a $1.8 million cut. Now, it's not all bad news, because they've added stuff back to the budget so that, you know, we have increases, as a, for instance, you know, there was stuff that came through, academic behavior grant came in for $250,000. We had an increase for, an allotment for driver pay for $130,000. Exceptional children, we saw an increase of about $400,000 drop into the budget. A computer services and equipment grant, that was likely, that was expected, but we had an increase there of about $700,000. So there's all these little pieces that are moving along that I'm learning that this isn't just how Connecticut does it, but this is how North Carolina does it. You have all this cash show up, and then you figure out, okay, how do you align that in with your state budget going forward? All right, so now, that said, if you recall our initial budget deficit, we called it So now, that said, if you recall, our initial budget deficit, we called it at $5 million. DPI cuts the allotment, we lose 1.8 million. Now that $5 million looks at 6.8. Now, you look at the $3 million we just got back, that we just talked about from the hospitalization, takes you down to 3.8. We're showing two on the sheet, based on things that we know that are coming forward. But if you're going to ask me what I think the deficit is right now, it's probably under a half a million, because there's a few more moving parts that have come in just this week that we need to sort of reflect into this budgetary process going forward. So we're not all the way there yet. However, I'm getting a lot of confidence around the fact that when we look at the austerity measures that we put in during the month of November that we shared with you, there's a pretty good chance we can close this down to a zero gap by the end of the year. So, that's kind of the take-home message from all this. So I'm asking for a approval of the original amendment, re-forecasted original amendment. I don't know exactly how to call that. And then a resolution number one, which is the true amendment for all the changes that have taken place since the beginning of the year.
Any other questions, board members?
I'm sorry. So, okay, so the state gave us the allotment based off of what they projected we were going to have.
Correct.
And I guess I'm trying to figure out if we hired folks based off of the allotment that was given, right? Because the prin, no? Okay.
We hired based on need.
Okay. And our need didn't go with their allotment? Is what, do I understand that correctly?
What I would say is that the state allotment wasn't sufficient to cover the need that we have.
And they still took money.
Which is why you have, which is why you have teachers paid out of local currently.
And they still took money, is what?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And there's nothing wrong with what the state did, right? I mean, if you read the allotment manual, they do exactly what they said they were going to do. It's just that the initial allotment that they gave us is substantially higher than it should have been, based on where our actual enrollment came out for the year.
Yeah, I still don't understand that, but it's okay. Thank you.
Well, let me say it this way. They thought we were going to have 36,000 kids, and they gave us an initial allotment based on that 36,000. Our actual enrollment came out at 35,200. So when they saw the actual number come out, they cut the allotment down to reflect the 35,200, and that caused the allotment to go down.
I'm still trying to figure out, like, how did we end up paying folks for that, and then having to, I guess, pull that money? I'm still lost there. But again, this probably is a sideline conversation.
No, no, no. It's not, because I want the public to kind of hear this, too, right? So when that happens, you know, Dr. Williams and I spend an awful lot of time on making sure the staffing's accurate for what it needs to be for the need that are identified in the schools. So let's say that works out to 1,800 positions, right? And the state's only going to cover 1,600. Well, that means we've got to find another funding source for that remaining 200 to cover that need. Some of that's going to go to federal grants, some of that's going to go to local. Some of it is increasing the deficit that you have in local right now, because you didn't have enough state money come in to cover all that, right? But it didn't, but it did, whatever the state did, didn't change what we saw for the internal need.
And that's where that use of fund balance comes in.
That's part of it.
Oh, my, thank you.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you for explaining that, because I've seen some things that state that apparently we don't know how to manage our budget appropriately as a school board or as a school system. So thank you for pointing that out. I appreciate it.
No.
That's where my question came from.
I'm glad you saw it, and I didn't, because that would have annoyed me, so. Be blunt.
Okay.
All right. And if you'll indulge me, the last pieces of the documents that you have in here, one of the things that, it's probably my second day here, Dr. Kavicki and I had a conversation around, I don't have a document that tells me where I am. And I'm like, what do you mean? He's like, well, I don't have a document that tells me where I am. It's like, I don't have something concise that sort of lays out where I am versus my budget at any given time. So the remaining two exhibits that you have in there does exactly that. Now, at least to me, because I'm a finance person, but I want this to be evolutionary in terms of what you want to see as a board going forward, right? So one of them is a summary document. If you look at the budget summary, yeah, go to that one. That's fine. Okay. This is the more detailed of the two. So this looks at all of the different funds that we have. It shows you what was the initial budget in that first column. What are the budget adjustments, some of which we just talked about in Column Two? And that gives you a current updated budget balance, that we're projecting 504 million for the year, right? That'll tie out to Budget Amendment Number One. Next column over tells you how much have we actually spent in each of those funds and each of those categories year-to-date, and this would have been through December 29th. The column after that talks about what's still open on POs and other encumbrances that we need to account for, saying, okay, we think that's going to be an expenditure for the rest of the year. And the very last column is, what's left? What's the unencumbered balance, right? So one of the exhibits has it at a very high level. This exhibit breaks it down to the Purpose Code level, very similar to the way that we do the budget amendments. But it gives you some idea of, like, where do I stand versus all these different budgets for the year. Now, again, this is a good way for me to do it and look at it and say, where am I? But if this isn't something that you'd find useful, or if there's something else, gee, Phil, this is great, but I really needed to do X, Y, and Z, I'd appreciate that feedback going forward. Because again, I expect this to be something evolutionary going forward, right?
We like this, Phil. And we like the other one, too.
I'll just say that I like it a lot, because it does give us a detailed in the different areas, and that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I do appreciate the work, all kidding aside, because it does make it more succinct and easier to understand. It gives you, it gives you a, I'm going to say minutia look, and then it gives you like a big picture look.